County Council Meeting, date Tuesday, April 26, 2022. And we welcome those who are viewing on YouTube. We welcome all of our many guests here. We appreciate you being here tonight. For those of you who came in, we did not have a sign up list. So if you'll please sign that yellow paper as attending, especially where this is a public hearing, we do need that. So thank you very much if you would do that. We would like to excuse Executive David Zook as he is in a meeting in Davis County today. I welcome all of the council members and thank you for being here. We're kind of at a little loss here because we don't have our flag back yet. So we are going to go ahead and give the opening to Council Chair Paul Borup.
Oh, here comes the flag.
Oh, here comes the flag. Thank you. Okay. Great. Great. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Where do you want it?
Thank you for bringing that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You can get more flags.
Thank you, Bart.
Good timing, Barbara.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. We can now continue. Thank you, Bart, for setting that up. All right. We will have our opening from Council Vice Chair Paul Borup.
Chair Moon Tidwell, thank you. Appreciate you giving me this opportunity. After the last council meeting ended, I made a critical error and let my emotions get the better of me. It was my fault. And due to my mistake, this council has experienced unnecessary drama and distractions. And I want to publicly apologize to my fellow council members for my error. In 1998, Cache County was the first in Utah to move to a council form of government. And in this move, we split the legislative and executive functions. Rather than two people making budget and policy decisions in a somewhat opaque process, Cache County opted for a different way. Today, we need at least five people that decide on policy. At least five people.
To decide on appropriate budgets.
And all of this is done in in public meetings. Now, I'll never apologize for being a staunch advocate of openness, of checks and balances, and commitment to widespread consensus that the good people of this county voted for 35 years ago. I won't apologize for demanding transparency and appropriate budget practices to make sure that we don't have financial shenanigans going on here. I'm committed to making sure we do more with less, that we don't raise taxes, and we never get complacent. You won't hear me say things like, "We have a $100 million budget, so a little more here or there doesn't really matter." It does matter. It's your money. It's the citizens' money. And I'll never apologize for making sure that we never take that or the citizens for granted. And with that, I'd like to end my remarks in the form of a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this wonderful place that we live, for this beautiful valley, for this United States of America, for the state of Utah, for the freedoms we enjoy, and for the blessings that we have. In this time of turmoil in the world, we're grateful that we can be here and be a shining light unto others. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy and for the blessings that we have. We'd ask thee to please bless us, that we can make good decisions here today, that we can look out for each other and continue to make this a wonderful place to live. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And if y'all will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Borup. Appreciate your comments. All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
I'll move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Has everyone had a chance to review the amendments from April 12?
Madam Chair, I move that we postpone approval of the minutes till next meeting. There's a couple inaccuracies. There was a motion that was forgotten, and I'd like to reread the minutes because I think I was confused by some of the things that were written there.
Okay. There's been a motion to...
Second that.
Okay. Very good. Moved and seconded that we wait to approve the minutes of April 12, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any... What's the word? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Very good. All right. We do have the financial reports on our laptops. I do, because the county executive isn't here, I want to take a moment. And I would like Julie Hollis-Tarrell to come up here because I would like to recognize her as being chosen as Cache Chambers Woman of the Year. And we appreciate her and all that she's done. So congratulations, Julie.
If there's anyone passionate about the visitor's bureau, it's...
Yeah, that's right. It's Julie. Thank you, Julie. Thank you so much. All right. The next item that we have is an item of special interest. It's the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. And we have invited Pastor Ron Flesner to read that proclamation. The actual day of prayer is Thursday, May 5, 2022. But because we won't meet before then, we've invited the pastor to be here at this meeting. So Pastor Flesner, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me. Forgive me if I'm a little emotional tonight because last year, I almost died. I am alive today because of the prayers of so many in the name of Jesus. It's the same thing. On the operating table, I came close three or four times to no longer being here. But as you can see now, most of my strength has returned. I'm in good health. And I just offer that as a testimony that prayer works. Prayer is the most precious and powerful resource we have. And not just for situations like mine, that we're literally life and death for a little bit. But our nation sorely needs prayer. And so I'm very thankful every year for the opportunity to come here, to read the proclamation. And I want to encourage you this year on Thursday, May 5, to set aside the day in prayer however you can. There'll be a broadcast that evening. You can join in on the National Day of Prayer website or website. That'll be 6:00 Mountain Time. And just get together with friends, get together with family, because our nation certainly needs prayer, and our county certainly needs prayer as well. So with that, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas a national day of prayer has been part of American heritage since it was declared by the first Continental Congress in 1775, and the United States Congress approved a joint resolution in 1952, setting aside a day each year for prayer. And whereas the United States Congress by Public Law 100-307 in 1998, as amended, affirms that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as the National Day of Prayer. And whereas the 71st observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 5, 2022. And whereas leaders and citizens of our nation are afforded the privilege of prayer, affirming our spiritual heritage and the principles upon which our nation was founded. And whereas we are grateful to those who defend our freedoms and ask for peace throughout our country, state, nation, and world. And whereas we unite with fellow citizens to exercise our constitutional freedom of religion by gathering in prayer, seeking guidance, provision, protection, and purpose for the benefit of every individual. Now therefore, we, the Cache County Council and County Executive, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5, 2022, as a day of prayer throughout Cache Valley, and we commend this observance to all of our citizens. In witness thereof, we have here unto set our hands an official seal on this 26th day of April, 2022. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We're grateful that you are here.
Yeah. It was touch and go because the Lord was there with me. And I am here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to accept this National Day of Prayer?
I'll accept.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we accept May 5, 2022, as a National Day of Prayer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. It's not quite 5:30, so we're going to...
The senior center.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to do some committee reports. And we have Giselle here, right? She's going to give us a Cache County Senior Citizen Center report. Thank you, Giselle, for being here.
Thank you for this opportunity to share our growth that we've had.
And by the way, it was a good article in the newspaper today.
Thank you.
Senior Center.
Thank you. Thank you. All the wonderful volunteers that we have helping us, right? So I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. We, since 2021 till now, we have 1,700 registered users at the senior center that have come one time, 10 times, 100 times total. We are excited for that growth that has happened. In 2021, we served 53,763 meals in our nutrition program. And in that program, we are serving congregate, so noontime lunches for individuals to come. We also serve Meals on Wheels for individuals that are homebound. And then also, that includes frozen meals, which we set out on the weekends for those individuals that need assistance with that. We did in 2021, 344 assessments, meaning that we assessed individuals that qualified for the program for Meals on Wheels. And of the total of those, 50 of those individuals, we did intakes additionally that did not qualify for our program. We had in our transportation, 122 individuals that we picked up to come to the center for activities and for noontime lunches, and also for field trips and activities throughout the county, and even in the state, going to Salt Lake and Ogden for our out to lunch bunch and some field trips as well. Public information, we've really hit the ball this time, this last year. We had 51,000 points of service that we fill is pretty accurate with Medicare Minute presentations, all of our newsletters, all of our websites that we have via Facebook, Instagram, all of our radio information that we've shared. Also, we had 310 clients that we helped with Medicare, enrolling them into Medicare Part A or Part B, even during open enrollment, helping them with the Part D plans as well. We helped clients with Medicaid. And that total came out to 280 hours of service that myself and my assistant assisted in this last year. Our total average of volunteers was about 100 volunteers, and they gave 4,000, sorry, 5,491 hours of service. And that is for both center volunteers and Meals on Wheels volunteers. We helped 160 individuals with any translation needs that they may have had. And we helped 100, close to 100 individuals, open their mail, read it to them, and help them understand what they're getting in their mailboxes. And we had, lastly, close to 1,500 individuals throughout the year that we called and did a telephone reassurance, just checking in on them, making sure that they're doing well if they hadn't come to the center in a day, or if they hadn't come to lunch, or even if they were not home when they needed to receive a meal. So we made close to 1,500 phone calls. And that is our report.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Giselle?
I'd just like to thank you, Giselle, for all that you do and how deeply you care about the senior citizens in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know a couple volunteers who do the Meals on Wheels. They love it. And they do. And they, when they go to the door and no one answers, they get very, very concerned.
Very upset. And then that's a phone call to us, and we need to call, and we need to follow up and make sure they are doing okay.
So thank you again. That's a great service. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Jake Forsgren from our vegetation, Public Works Vegetation. Jake, would you like to come up, please?
Can everybody hear me? So thank you, Council, for this opportunity to come. First off, I'll introduce myself to those of you who don't know me. My name is Jake Forsgren. I work for Vegetation Management Division. I'm coming on to 15 years here at the county, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. I'm excited to come and do a report on something that I'm passionate about, and that is noxious weeds and our county. So I put noxious in there. Noxious weeds. Matt Phillips, our Public Works Director, has asked me to come and do this presentation. I would have loved to bring my whole team in here to do this, just because I think this is a team effort, and it's not necessarily just one person. So I put a picture up here of our team members, since they can't be here. So as far as the Vegetation Management Division, there are four full-time employees that work down there in noxious weed control in this county. Each one of them have a separate responsibility as far as what they're doing in noxious weed control, but they are all working in noxious weed control. And then we also hire 13 seasonal technicians that come in through the busy times of the summer and help assist in projects that we've got going there. So this brings us right into the purpose why we have a noxious weed program here in the county. So first and foremost, it's required by the state. It's required by the state that each county has a noxious weed designated person or persons to go out and organize, supervise, and coordinate noxious weed control in our county. Our county is not big in size, but there is a lot of stuff out there. And interesting enough, any new noxious weeds that's coming into our state, for some reason, seems to find their place in Cache County first. So we have a good crew out there that's doing mapping every day, that's helped us in this efforts of locating these weeds. I wanted to point out a thing in this picture. So a lot of people will look at this picture, and they'll think, oh, that looks green. It's a beautiful picture. What's really wrong with it? But a lot of people fail to recognize what's looming in there, the dangers that are looming in there. Noxious weeds have been classified as a wildfire. If we do not control them, they'll go out of control to the point where it can be economic danger, economic troubles for the landowner. This picture here, if you look in the middle, it kind of, it's hard to see, but that is actually go-through. Go-through is a problem here in our county, and our group is working diligently every day, working with landowners, trying to combat this weed. But if this was left unchecked and no one done anything about it, that would spread through this whole field, and it would be an economic threat to the landowner. So part of the noxious weed control program for our county, the state has declared 54 noxious weeds to be put on a list. And by state law, as a county noxious weed employee, it's my responsibility to go out with my team and map and find these 54 noxious weeds. And if we've got them, then reach out and talk to the landowners. Couple years ago, I think, believe it was three, the Cache County Weed Board met together and decided to add two more noxious weeds to that list to make it 56. And them two weeds are Russian salt tree and crack willow. If you want more detail of what these noxious weeds are, you can go ahead and get on the county's Vegetation Management's website. There's a list of them there. Or you feel free to please call me. I would be glad to come out and help you do weed identification. I've got picture books that I can hand out that'll help in this process as well. So I want to do something a little interactive before we got going. So that first picture that came up there, by the raise of hands, who has an idea of what that may be?
Way in the back.
Thistle.
Yes.
Thistle.
It's a thistle. Well, close.
Canadian thistle.
No, it's close. It looks like a Canadian thistle flower, but it's not a thistle. Joel, you can answer. Okay. That's not fair. He's right. It's nap weed. Why are we concerned about nap weed? Because it has capabilities of releasing stuff into the soil that's going to start competing with other weeds, the desirable stuff, or, excuse me, other plants, the desirable stuff we want growing in our fields and our gardens and around the county. And it's going to slowly start competing that out to where it's going to kill all the good vegetation out. Excellent. Okay. This is the next one. And I'll give you a hint, it's not a dandelion. Okay? Any ideas? Councilman Erickson.
Yellow star thistle.
Yes. He said it's yellow star thistle. So as you can see, this is the reason why this is a noxious weed. If any of you guys have ever walked through this, you'll scratch your legs up. It's got a great characteristic of the thorns on the seed bracts, which makes a defense mechanism, so our wildlife and animals can eat the flower off the top, which makes it go to seed, and then it just spreads that way. So very interesting weed. Go ahead. And the next one, I'm sure everyone's going to know this one. I threw an easy one in there just in case.
Gotch thistle. I know that one.
Gotch thistle. I heard it. This is a problem throughout our whole county. It doesn't matter if we go out in the city. It don't matter if we're out in the county. It don't matter if we're up in Forest Service. We find this everywhere. We're spot treating it. We're notifying the landowners to see if they need help. Because this is something that we want to try to keep control of if we can, just because we realize the detrimental effects it has on our environment. Go ahead. The next part of our noxious weed program is the landowner notification letter process. This started about seven years ago. And what this does is it provides education to the public on certain noxious weeds they have, may have on their parcels. A lot of the landowners in this county, I shouldn't say a lot, but a few, are what we call absentee landowners, meaning they do not live in our county. And so when we go out and the crews out mapping and doing weed control, we see some of these areas. We send a copy, and this is a copy of the letter, to the landowner. A lot of times, they will call me and say, "I've seen that weed on my place, but I didn't ever really knew what it was. What can I do? How can you help me?" And so this has provided a great education for our public. It's also provided good public service, just because we are out there identifying those parcels of land that maybe is being neglected or maybe has been overlooked. We notify the landowners on these, and it makes a process for us to go in and give them some help and to provide a service for their neighbors. And then all this is done by a tracking system that our GIS department here at the county has put together many years ago for us. And we've compiled all that data, and it's given us an opportunity to go out and send letters and keep up on the early detection, rapid response weeds that are here in the county, meaning the weeds we don't have a lot of, but are starting to come in, and we can make a difference. So we're going to focus upon those so we don't have a problem later. As of yesterday, we had sent out 1,981 notification letters. And then, as the picture states, good neighbors eradicate their noxious weeds. So a little bit about our projects. I don't have a lot of time, but I'll go through these quickly. So at the Vegetation Management Division, part of the noxious weed program, we go out and we do various weed control, noxious weed control in our county. Some of them weeds may fall under a grant. We've been blessed, I guess you would say, to have five grant awards handed to us to go out and do weed control and put it on the ground. And that's being provided for all the landowners here in the county. So any of the projects that would fall underneath them grants, we're sending letters to, and we're going out and taking care of those if the landowner needs help. Some of our other projects is aquatic. This is fairly new. We're starting to see more and more need of this. We're talking to canal companies, irrigation companies, trying to make them noxious weed aware, providing a service to them to control weeds on our irrigation systems, because we all know that some of the weeds, or if not all of them, come through as using water as a vehicle. So we're finding an importance in that. Biological control projects, so there is some biological control agents available out there that we're able to bring in and release on some of these noxious weeds. We got our non-grant projects, which basically everything that doesn't fit into a grant or an aquatic will fit under the non-grants, where we'll go and offer a service to spray noxious weeds. We got a right-of-way vegetation program, which is all the county right-of-ways, as well as county property, owned property within the county. And then, of course, now, not, last but not least, snow removal in the winter. Our team helps assist with snow removal. All right. Clicked it again. Clicked it again. Sorry. So a year-end review, right quickly. This is numbers from what we, as a group, did last year. So on our grant projects, we treated 2,072 acres in our county for noxious weeds that fit under a grant. Next, we, in non-grant projects, we treated 419 acres. In our aquatic projects, which is along our canal systems and rivers, we treated 51 acres. And then in our right-of-way and county-owned property, 845. Last year, our awesome crew out doing mapping and the work that they're doing in the fields, we've located 2,426 parcels within this county that has a state-declared or county-declared noxious weed on them. We released 3,100 biological control agents in this county to work for weed control as well. And then something kind of to highlight, years past, vipers, bug loss, and squirrel snapweed had been eradicated from Cache County. Last year, our group was out doing some weed control on some pastures, found a viper bug loss plant in a different spot than where we even was before. And then they located a squirrel snapweed on our border between the deer fence and down here into the valley floor. So we are definitely, as a group, going to stay on these, making sure that they're being monitored and sprayed so they do not spread. Go ahead. So the grand total of all this, so last year, Cache County Vegetation Management Team treated 3,387 solid acres of noxious weeds. So if you were to take a parcel that was 3,387 acres, every square inch of that parcel would have been covered with a noxious weed. So that's how much noxious weeds we have out there and how much our division has controlled. And before we get to questions, I got a year-end report that I'd like to hand to all the council, if that is okay. It goes more into detail of some of the projects that we've done. I wanted to pinpoint on this picture. So a lot of the noxious weeds do look appealing. But don't be deceived. If you have any questions, please reach out, talk to me. You're welcome to call me down at the division. Reach out to USU Extension. There's many, many resources out there that can help you so you don't bring a problem like this into our county. That is actually purple loose strife, and it is a noxious weed on the state, but we have it here in our waterways. And it can affect wildlife. It can displace wildlife as well as impede water. So it's something that we do not want here. And then last but not least, noxious weeds are everyone's problem. So usually, when landowners will call me and say, "Hey, what can the county do to help me?", I would say, "You know what? We'll be here to help you, but what can you do to help us? What can you do to help your neighbors?" This is an everybody's problem. We are here to help and assist, but obviously, if we don't all work together, none of this is going to work. So thank you for this time. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Jake?
I've worked with Jake there with the weed board for several years. It is probably one of the most professionally-run, highly respected, and by the state is considered like the epitome of a program that is run in the state. He's always asked, will you come and show us how to do what we do here in Cache County? And it's not that we have more weeds, which we do have our share, but the advice also, I think, is just don't pick the flowers. When you pick them, they hop and end up everywhere. He does a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there one specific weed that is really problematic right now that people need to watch out for?
You know, that is a good question. There's a lot of weeds that are really problematic. But if you look on that list, and not all you guys are going to have access to this, but we will get it on the website, Cache County has prioritized the state noxious weed list to match what we have here on the ground. And so what I would say, the most ones that I would say is the most severe are the first 10 that are in yellow under EDRR, which means early detection rapid response. Those are the ones that we need to get on now and control before they turn into our next Dyer's Woad, before they turn into our next Canada thistle, or even far worse. So that's your question.
Yeah, that does. Thank you.
One thing just to highlight that you mentioned early on is the wildfire issue. If we look at what happened in Colorado toward the end of last year, right, you get all this greenery, everything goes up, and then it goes brown, and it's just that fuel for a wildfire that we're going to be facing a huge issue on in the coming year. So anything we can do to stop that, your efforts are hugely appreciated there.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Jake. That was very good. Appreciate your presentation. Appreciate you being here. And thank you for all the work you do for our county. All right, very good. It is time now to talk about public hearings. I will ask again, if any of you have come in and not signed the paper, please sign this yellow paper with your name for that, so that we know who's been here for the public hearings. You can do it now, or you can do it on your way out. Just make sure we have your name on there. All right, the first thing that we need to do is set a public hearing for May 10, 2022, ordinance 2022-15, Christie Farm Rezone. Request rezone 7.41 acres from the agricultural A10 zone to the rural 2, RU2 zone, located at 5560 West, 2,000 South, near Vindan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set a public hearing for May 10, 2022, ordinance 2022-15, Christie Farm Rezone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, now we're to the point of where we have so many people here and why we're here. We are doing a public hearing, Resolution 2022-10, a resolution approving the appointments of representatives to the Avon, Cornish, Hyde Park, Millville-Nibley, Newton, Paradise, and Richmond Cemetery District's Boards of Trustees. Because we have so many people here, we are, I'm going to try to go by alphabetical order, and will, what we're asking is that you can come up, give your name, and the district that you're representing, even though I am going to name the district, and a couple sentences about why you would like the position on the board. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May anyone else comment who's not seeking a position?
We will have that after.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If, we're going to start with Avon. And so those members who are from Avon, and if I miss any names, please let me know. I'm just going by a list here. We have Deanna Holm, David Mon, Mark Williams, Roger Pulsifer, and Kirsten Knowles. Are any of those people here? Please come up. Okay.
Madam Chair.
You'll come to the.
Madam Chair, as I look at this.
Yes.
Wouldn't the current board member be made up of five board members?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's five board members. There's five board members here who have asked to sit on it. Are we asking them to say why they want to come when they'll already be established?
Good point.
Well, I don't think they have to speak to the public to be reappointed. But I mean, if we want to do, I just know all these people here, and this is going to go on all night. I know Roger is a good board member, and he'll probably want to go on for 15 minutes.
No. We don't. Dave and I, and the others that were mentioned, we've been on the board. I've been there since 1980, so.
Now, you all want to serve because you've reapplied, right?
Okay, very good, then.
No one's running against that.
Okay, good.
I mean, that's okay, but I mean, I'm just saying, to make this move a little smoother, if there's not anybody that is wanting to get on and wants to explain why he's a great, would be a great board member, I don't think there's any need for these. But yeah, there's a lady with us. Anyway, they would want to address us, but.
Okay.
You're the chair.
No, I appreciate that, Gordy, so thank you. So are you saying, Gordy, that we should just hear from the new applicants? Is that what you're saying?
I think we should ask them if they do want to say anything, if they don't want anything, let's just move on to the next one.
Awesome. Okay, thanks, Gordy. All right, do you two want to say anything?
I told you, Roger.
It's a high-paying job, you know. So.
So we're good.
We're good.
And what are your names, please?
I'm David Mon.
David Mon. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
On this list, are these, do the people have to apply, or are we able to amend this list? I'm not quite sure I understand the process. Does Janine know? Or John know?
These are all the people that contacted me, but that doesn't limit it. You can choose.
Because there may be people who were submitted to me by mayor of a town.
Okay, and that, we can listen to them after the people on the list, if that's agreeable to you, or do you want?
Yeah, that's fine. I think some of them might be here.
John, wasn't there a requirement that they had to apply by a certain date? Now all of a sudden, we're changing the rules?
I'm trying to understand what the rules were. I'm confused.
Code just says the council appoints. Notice, I think it could be characterized as an invitation, said that if you're interested to submit your name and interest to Janine, that's as an aid to the council. As I understand it, it's not a code requirement.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, then we have Cornish, Mr. Dale Buxton, he's a current board member. Is he here tonight? All right, then we won't, then we, now we have Hyde Park, Portia Anderson, who is a current board member. Would you like to address us? No? All right, then we have, we have combined Hyde Park/North Logan. So we're going to be hearing from, we've got Maureen Hearn, Jennifer Bruff, is that the correct way to say that? Rachel Willis, Casey Brown, Alma Brown, and then we have Mark Lynn. So if you would, if you would like to address us, please come up, state your name, and tell us in a few sentences why you are interested in this position. Any of those people here, please come up? Yes?
Are we, if we have something to say about this, but we're not buying for a spot, there will be time later.
There will be time after we hear from our applicants.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to say one more time, we will hear from anyone that's interested, but it will be after we hear from our applicants. All right?
Hi, I'm Rachel Willis, and so we're for the Hyde Park Cemetery, and we live in North Logan side. And so we just wanted to get some representation for our voice to be aligned.
Okay, thank you, Rachel.
I'm Alma Brown, and we live in North Logan, and we've supported the North Logan Cemetery for many, many years, but we're not aware, we're not aware of until this last week, that we're paying for Hyde Park Cemetery and North Logan Cemetery. And so we want that injustice taken care of.
Okay, thank you, Alma. All right. And if you would turn that microphone up so that we can better hear you, that'd be great.
I'm Jolene Kirby. I'm from Hyde Park, representing the Hyde Park Cemetery Maintenance District. I'd like to be considered for the Board of Trustees there.
What was your name again?
Jolene Kirby.
Okay, thanks, Jolene.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am, I am Maureen Hearn. I'm a resident of the Hyde Park Cemetery Maintenance District, and I have a great desire and a great passion to serve on this district. One thing that thrills me about the state of Utah is its volunteer force, and the fact that we come together as a community of people to make change for the better for all of our citizens. And I love that. And after a very quick study, I would say, of Utah, Utah Code 17, on local districts in general, and also on the Cemetery Maintenance District Act, I noticed here that it's in Utah Code 17, 2A105, additional duties of a cemetery representative, additional duties of a cemetery maintenance district Board of Trustees, it states, "In addition to the powers and duties of a Board of Trustees under Chapter 1, Part 3, Board of Trustees, each cemetery maintenance district Board of Trustees shall beautify, improve, and maintain each cemetery within the district." In the Hyde Park Cemetery Maintenance District, there is only currently one cemetery, but I know that personally, over the last six months, Jolene Kirby and I have donated over 800 hours of volunteer service to beautify, improve, and maintain this cemetery. So yeah, I'm very passionate about doing this. I'm passionate about implementing the statutes that's written in the Utah Code that govern Boards, Board of Trustees of Cemetery Maintenance Districts throughout our state. Just reading through this, I'm amazed of how many different statutes actually exist in our, in our code, and probably are unbeknownst to many individuals. Just one point of clarification that I might add is.
Fast.
Is I, thank you, I could talk for a long time, I'm sorry, is I don't know of a Hyde Park/North Logan Cemetery Maintenance District. It is not listed in the code as one of the 11 districts within the state of Utah. There is the Hyde Park Cemetery District, and I know there has been conversation about perhaps adjusting boundaries. Utah Code 17-1417 discusses how that is to go about. And so I would perhaps call a point of order at this point, that we look at the statutes to govern that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I answer that quickly?
Sure.
Although it's called the Hyde Park Cemetery District, there are actually 704 parcels from North Logan that are in that district, as well as 222 others apparently that are not in actual Hyde Park City.
But I'm not talking about the city, I'm talking about the district.
Right. I'm just letting you know that that's why they're saying it's North Logan Hyde Park.
But technically, it's not what it's called, and it's not what's called in the statutes. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I think as we look at the board appointment here.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm Mark Lynn. I've lived in Hyde Park for over 40 years and have been on that planning commission for 20 years. And I was just concerned that it says there's five people on the board, and I told the county executive that if you don't have five people on the board, I'll be available.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, anyone else from Hyde Park/North Logan?
I'm Cody Johnson, and I've been on the board for the last two years, the Hyde Park Board. And so I've appreciated the opportunity to represent the citizens of Hyde Park District, and I'd like to continue.
Thank you, Cody. Appreciate that. All right, anyone else? All right, now we're moving to Millville/Nibley. We have current board members Jim Jensen, Randy Fieser, is that how you say that? Richard Lishman, Chad Davis, Doug Pearson. Do, are any of them here, and do they wish to address? Please come forward.
I'm the difficult name, Randy Fieser.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I've been on the board for the last three and a half years, then it really woke my eyes up. It woke me up. The reason is, is that one of the advantages we have is that four out of the five members are retired. And that is a heck of a plus, because the time you get phone calls in the middle of the day, you've got to break away, go up and take care of things, whether it's digging a grave, backfilling a grave, working with the mortuary, working with the family, when it comes to taking care of the headstones and stuff, placing the headstones, unknown snowstorms, you've got to be up there in the mornings in order to take care and clear all the roads and everything. You've got to blow the snow off the graves. There's just so much to it, it really woke my eyes up. I'm serious. It takes a lot of commitment, dedication, and pride in the fact that we're trying to do as much as we can with the cemetery to make it as respectful and appreciated as possible. So that's one of the reasons why I'd like to go for another term. We've got a lot of experience on the board right now. One gentleman's been there 26 years, and I'll tell you, the advantage is, is that when you have a backhoe come in to dig a grave, this individual knows exactly where the other vault was placed, where you have to be careful at. Many times, we've been down in the graves ourselves with the shovel, having to clear the vault to make sure we don't hit it with a backhoe or anything else. And you've got to be respectful, too, when you backfill the graves and stuff. So again, if the opportunity's there, I want to be back on the board again. And I think all five of the individuals, like I said, the advantage we got out of the five, four of us are retired, so if one of us isn't capable of running up there, taking care of the public's needs, or whatever your mortuary needs or whatever, there's usually three other ones that are more than willing to jump in and take care of it. So that's what you need, is somebody that's versatile enough to where you can just break away and go and do it. So I guess that's one of the advantages of being old. Don't ask me if there's any more, okay?
Thank you, Randy. Okay, great.
I'm Doug Pearson, and I've served on the board for a couple years, and I have a great respect for all those people that is in the cemetery. It started in about 1860, and my great-grandfather was one of the early Sextons. My other great-great-grandfather was, you know, was a bishop in the early 1900s. That was when the, when the church kind of rounded, and it flipped back and forth from town to church. And back then, the town and the church worked really well together. Let's see, my, my, my goal for, for the upcoming while, is to have a better relationship and to work better with, with the cities. I am concerned, you know, about the taxpayers in both Nibley and Millville, and I'm concerned about all those residents, you know, that are in the cemetery. We have to remember them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Chad Davis. I'm the only one that has to work on the board. I've been on it two and a half, three years. I do a lot of the maintenance up there, so I, you know, all the sprinkling repairs, that's me. So I'm, I'm very passionate about what I do up there. A lot of my relatives are buried up there. I'm going to be buried up there. So that's, you know, it's just kind of humbling to go up there and see that, the things that the past people have put in, the, you know, the monuments for the veterans, and, you know, it's probably one of the best in the valley, in my opinion, at least. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have former board members Wade Anderson, Owen Jensen, and then we have new applicants, Brady Jensen, Dan Ames, and Thane Mickelson. Are any of you here that would like to come up and make a presentation?
Hi there. I'm not much on presentation myself. I'm Dan Ames. I am from Nibley. I've now rapidly becoming one of the old-timers of Nibley. I've lived in Nibley all my life, two, a block apart, two houses. So I'm pretty much old-school Nibley. I just, the cemetery, I've always appreciated how they've taken care of it, and I was asked if I was interested, and I said, yes, I am interested in serving. I have, I have a lot of skills and talents. I have a lot of skills and talents, and I'd be honored to be on that board, to help if so chosen. I just want to, I just want to do my part. It's time for me to do my part.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Thane Mickelson, from Nibley. And first of all, I just want to say how grateful I am for the amount of service that whoever's been on the board has given. That's a tremendous service to the community. And I got a call a little bit ago from our current mayor with some concerns over some current conflicts. And he asked that I consider serving and bring my sets of skills, whatever they might be, to help through some of the challenges. And I've spent the last decade planning, in the planning capacity for the state of Utah, and have a great desire to do what I can to serve. And I'm just putting myself out there willing at the needs there, so thank you.
Thank you, Thane. All right, anyone else from Millville/Nibley that wants to address us? Okay, before we move on to Newton, we, Dale, did you come in? There you are. Would you like to address us? And Dale is from Cornish.
Sorry for the delay, but yeah, I'm Dale, I'm Cornish. The other two members that are on there currently had indicated verbally to me that they were willing to come back and serve again. So Ray Pitcher and Kyle were both willing to come back and do that. So that's about it, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you for being here. All right, we're moving on to Newton. We have a new applicant, Justin Cooley, is that person here? Okay, Justin.
I'm Justin Cooley, I applied because I've done my whole life in Newton. Both my parents, my grandparents, great-grandparents are buried in Newton. I think it has one of the prettiest views of the valley from there, and I have interest, want to help it, see that it has an upkeep, and they keep it a beautiful place, and to honor our lost loved ones.
Great, thank you, Justin, appreciate you being here. All right, now we have, we're going, moving on to Paradise. We have some current board members Kelly Cronquist, Clayton Obray, David Curtis, Terrell Priest. Are any of you here that would like to address us?
Good evening, folks, I'm David Curtis, I've been involved with Paradise since 1945. Paradise has been good to me, and so my desire has been to be of service to the community, and I've been on the board for 12 years. I appreciate the folks that live in Paradise and what they represent. And that's my desire to be of service.
Thank you very much, David. Any others? We do have a new applicant, Robert Lee, is he, come on up, Robert.
I've been in Paradise since 1962, and just working and living with Dave and Randy Moultrie, the Sexton. And it's been a great getting to know them again. Randy's new to Paradise, but, and it's, I just want to serve. Everything that David said is the way I feel too. So we were just visiting one day, and we had, we lost a board member. So David suggested that I apply, and it felt right, so I'd be grateful to serve and more than willing, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. Did we miss any other names from Paradise? All right, moving on to Richmond, we have some current board members Jared Gilman, Kelly Crafts, Amy Sadler, Kevin Graham. Do any of you wish to address us? All right, we have a new applicant, Amber Irvin, is that person here?
I heard Dave Erickson was interested as well.
Did you?
I thought in that district. I have my own cemetery.
Sure.
All right, so not seeing anyone coming forward from that. Now is there anyone at this time then that would like to come up to and address us about any of this? Yes?
I have to correct what I said before.
Okay.
I've been furiously reading applicable code sections.
Okay.
And they do speak of appointing applicants. I'll read the-
Okay.
Code provision.
You might want to come up so we can hear you.
I'll speak loud when this mic's on.
Okay.
The appointing authority, and that's the Cache County Council, shall select a person to fill the vacancy from the applicants who meet the qualifications established by law. And then there's a code provision that allows county council members to appoint a council member if there are an insufficient number of applicants.
Okay.
Those together suggest to me that the persons need to have applied.
Okay, great, thank you.
So do we know what the qualifications are?
Yeah.
As long as they're not a resident of the cemetery, they're probably qualified.
I can read you the qualifications, I don't want to get them wrong. You need to be, each member of a local district board of trustees shall be a registered voter at the location of the member's residence, and except as otherwise provided, we could look into that if it appears necessary, be a resident within the boundaries of the local district, and if applicable, the boundaries of the division of the local district from which the member is elected. So you need to be a registered voter at your residence, and then your residence needs to be within the district.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that said then, are you telling us, John, that if no one submitted an application to Janine by this time, that they are not eligible? Is that what you're telling me?
By the time listed on the notice.
Okay. And what was the time listed on the notice, Janine?
It was the 18th.
The 18th, all right. So now that we are at this point, does anyone have anything that they'd like to say concerning this public hearing? Yes, sir? You'll give us your name, please?
My name is David Hare, I'm the present mayor of Millville. It seems that the present board that we have had, we've had issues with in the way of lawsuits. And we're the type of community that likes to work with people, and we just feel as a council, it might be time to move on with the new board.
Thank you, Mayor Harry, yes, please.
Laurie Jacobson, I speak as a resident of the Millville/Nibley Cemetery District. I sent you written comments, there's only one thing I want to reiterate, and that is my thanks to the existing board and their past work on our behalf. I knew that the last three months, we're going to be dealing with the number of people that want to live in the south half of Cache County, and I'm surprised at the controversy surrounding the number of people that want to die in the last half of Cache County.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jacobson. All right, anyone else? Yes, please.
I'm Lindsay Peterson, mayor of North Logan City. Just to give you some background with this, the Hyde Park Cemetery Maintenance District was formed decades ago, and now currently includes 702 parcels in North Logan City that pay both a dedicated portion of their property taxes to this maintenance district, along with paying city taxes that go to the maintenance of the North Logan Cemetery. That cemetery came into existence in 2008. Our intention in seeking representation on this cemetery board is to provide for some North Logan City representation. And I will be clear about our intention in doing so. We hope to realign that boundary. I feel a kinship with Moses in his saying, let my people go. We sent out a survey of these North Logan residents that are affected by this, and they overwhelmingly, sometimes angrily, requested to realign this boundary. That, as I understand it, from Mr. Luthy's analysis of the laws, requires both a resolution from the North Logan City Council, and also from the cemetery board. So we would like some representation on that board. In the absence of that representation, in the form of a majority on that board, we would request, in this public setting, that that board respect the wishes of those residents who have very clearly indicated their preference that those district boundaries be reliant. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Yes?
My name's Scott Bennett, I live in North Logan, within the Hyde Park Cemetery District. And I reiterate what Mayor Peterson just said. Our subdivision is just over 85 homes, and I'm representing 32 of those individuals that we've talked about this, and we would like representation on the board with the specific reason of breaking away. And, you know, right now, we're paying into the Hyde Park Cemetery District, and we're paying for the North Logan Cemetery, and we prefer the North Logan Cemetery only.
Thank you, thank you.
Maureen Hearn's, I strongly encourage this council to appoint representation from the residents that live in the North Logan area into the Hyde Park Cemetery District, so that we can follow the code exactly.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else like to address us?
Moved to close the public hearing. Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you to everyone for your attendance here and for your comments. We will definitely take all of these into consideration.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We don't have this on the rest of our agenda tonight, correct? We're going to discuss this next time at our next meeting, if I can?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay?
You're welcome.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay, but if you feel like you would like to go, you're welcome to do that too.
It's invigorating from here.
Thank you.
Did you say something wrong or something?
I must have done. Yes, thank you for those who are signing the paper. If you have not signed, please sign up. All right, let's continue on with our meeting, please. We're at 9C, public hearing ordinance 2022-14, and ordinance to vacate any public right-of-way along 10940 South, lying north, and within the boundary lines of the 165 subdivision in Avon. All right. Is there, yes, please, Matt.
You guys have the legal in front of you, I just wanted to just try to break that down into where we're at, what we're doing, and what this vacation will do, so.
Okay.
This is, just kind of get you guys oriented of where we're talking. We're south of Paradise in Avon. This is a little bit closer up, if you guys are familiar with this area, there's kind of a big loop in Highway 165. And what I have highlighted there is the portion of right-of-way that the county is proposing to vacate. This is the same map, this map comes from 1912. You will see the road that's highlighted there. So the current road that we're trying to vacate is shown on the maps in 1912, 1949, 1971, and then in 1983, on the county maps, we do not see that road anymore. So if you go to the state code, it talks about if a highway's been used for 10 years, it becomes a right-of-way. And the only way to get rid of that right-of-way is through an ordinance by the county council. So we showed about 50 years of history of that road being on all the maps, being used, and it was not, we don't have any evidence of why it didn't, but currently, it doesn't exist on the ground. And so the county's trying to clean up, make things right in that area, and vacate this right-of-way. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Matt?
You said it doesn't exist on the ground, so there's no road, there's nothing there? Nothing, then why did we get-
No improvements whatsoever.
So why did we get a thing saying they want to use it for right-of-way, just to protect it?
It's, like I said, it's been there for a lot of years, so, but the farmer to the north of that, where it is, if you go back to the very first one, right there, you'll see, you'll see how there is a subdivision that's currently on that parcel, and there's a three lots along SR 165. The portion that we're vacating is everything north of that property line, so.
Is there some active construction on that, the south?
The very south and west lot, yes, there is. They have a zoning clearance that's pending.
Yeah, this is part of that's holding it up.
Yes, yes. So that, the bigger parcel of that is called the 165 subdivision, so the county's not vacating anything outside of that subdivision boundary. So it's just the portion that's inside of that subdivision boundary.
Matt, a question for you. So it was on all those maps, and then it suddenly disappeared in 1971, and there was no record found that the county vacated it at that point.
We're not, I'm not aware of any records or that this has been to the county council for vacating.
Thank you.
So Matt, the way I read this, according to the way the law's written for the last 100 years, that that was a road at one time. It was used for a number of years at one time, and it probably qualified to be a road. And we can't just all of a sudden strike it off the map like they did in 71.
That is correct.
It's really not legal.
That's my understanding as well.
For some reason, it got struck, but it really shouldn't have. I don't have any objection to vacating it, but I'm a little concerned when all of a sudden, I don't know if we have to blame the county or who we blame, but we can't just all of a sudden start blanking roads without it being abandoned, right?
That's my understanding as well, councilman.
I guess the reason I'm a little sensitive of this is I've talked with Matt quite a bit about a piece of property and a road that runs there in, north of Hiram, that's been used as a public road for who knows how many years. It's been gravelled, it's been there, it's on the grid system. And all of a sudden, when I want it to be maintained a little bit, it's disappeared from the map. It's not on the county map anymore, but the road's still there. So I get a little sensitive when we start doing these kind of things, and it affects people that, you know, have been involved in these things. But I think Matt would have to admit that when I tell him that road's a county road, he'd have to admit that it's a county road. Just because it's not on the county grid doesn't mean that it hadn't been used for 70, 80 years. But anyway, I'd make a motion, are we ready for a motion?
Well, can I ask you one question?
We're having a public hearing.
Go on the public hearing, so.
Oh, is this going to be a public hearing? Okay, I guess I'm wrong.
On the property owner, do we have a legal description that has anything to do with the road or anything on that from the legal description on that side?
No, we can't find any legal descriptions of the road. So to my knowledge, it was done prescriptive use, and we just follow the state code on those rights. And so that's why there's not a width in this resolution either, is because we don't have a width. That would be what's reasonably used to maintain that, so we don't have a width, we don't have a deed, we don't have anything, but it clearly shows up on county records for almost seventy-five years, so.
So, that road is in just one property owner's property. It doesn't, doesn't go through two or anything else?
Currently, it's in two, because you have two different parcels there, Nolan, but the part that we're vacating is anything north, so essentially, we're vacating it out of two parcels. If there was, if that road, if someone found research ten years from now that had a map that, that we're not aware of or anything that was south of there, that's not currently being vacated, so.
Okay.
We're only vacating everything south that's within that one sixty-five subdivision.
Matt?
Yes.
To your knowledge, has this been used recently as a road? Because like, when you look at the picture, it just, you can't tell that it was a road or is being used as a road.
To my knowledge, I don't think it has been used, but there's people that might live out there that might have knowledge that's, that I don't have, but to me, it's been farmed, and there's been alfalfa planted in it, and it's mostly been for agricultural use within this area.
Thank you.
Matt, it looks to me like you've got three frontage parcels, and then you've got, there is a section there that goes back to where it says road to be vacated from the frontage.
Correct.
That is going to be the access point for that. Is it an agromainder back there?
It is. Chris, do you know if it's an agromainder? I believe it is an agromainder.
And so, that still has access?
Yes.
Okay, how about if that was a road, you know, apparently it was on the maps, that road, some, sometime, it went back to the parcel to the east?
Correct.
Okay, is that, I guess we'll probably hear maybe from that landowner or something about that, or?
To the east, we're only vacating at the end of that one, Dave, so the rest of that will still be accounted for.
Right.
There's still a portion of.
Were they looking for that as an access point, or did they even know about?
I have not been approached, approached by anyone requesting access to that parcel by any of those roads. This is more of less to make sure that the county's done what they needed to do. If we're not going to use that road, we're not going to put it on our inventory, that we've handled it through the legal matters. It did come to our knowledge from property owners, but since then, I haven't had any requests, I haven't had any petitions for or against, I'm just trying to.
It's probably carrying, we'll find out if there is an objection.
Correct.
Well, we received a letter, right?
All right, any more questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come up and address this issue? Please come up if you'll state your name and tell us what you'd like to say.
I'm the property owner that started all this, I guess. I want to go back just a little bit. You want to know why the road disappeared? Well, back before in the eighties, the, the owner of that property took the fence down. The first thing he did is washed out the road, so it couldn't be used and blocked it off. He washed it out, and then he took the fence out, okay? So, there's no fence there now, so that the surveyors come in, instead of surveying to the description of the property, they've, they've surveyed to the fence, okay? I have made two measurements of my property, my description, and my property line includes that road. I've been paying the taxes on that road now for fifty-some years, because my property line, it goes beyond my fence, over onto where the fence he took down and beyond that just a little bit. So, my property line actually was always been on the north line of that road, and, and that's the reason the road disappeared. And it is my suggestion that that road be left open for future use of, of the community. And if it can't be used as a road, it could be used as a, as a sidewalk. We have a lot of people walking up the highway now and riding bikes and riding horses on the main highway, one sixty-five. They could very easily use that area. I have no intentions of, of farming that ground, but nevertheless, I don't want to give it up. It's a good piece of ground, but because he washed it out, it's, all the top soil has gone off of it, and the present owners have hauled top soil and other stuff in on top of it, and that's the reason they're farming. And I've had no objections to it, but it's still, I think, I feel like it's my property, and, and my measurement says that, that it's been deeded to me all this time.
So, which Mon was you, did you say your first name was?
Gary Mon.
Jerry Mon?
Gary.
Gary.
I'll spell that for you, because it's different. G-A-R-R-I-E.
That is a different spelling.
We would like, we would like to see that.
So, it's your opinion that you own the property that that road's there that we're trying to abandon, and it had been open for all those years, and now you explain why it all of a sudden don't show up?
Right.
That's why we have public hearings.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mon. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the question is, though, if you want it to remain, then, as a public right-of-way, that would take away, then, your ownership of that?
I, I really don't have any objections, as long as it's used for, for the public, but I, I don't think we should just give it to the new property owners that are coming in and surveying over to my fence line and taking it free gratis.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Mon?
Yeah, so you're saying there's a property line dispute, then, as to where the new, the new lot owner versus yours?
Yes, you see, when he came in and built, he dug, he dug his foundation, he dug basically on that north property line, which doesn't, which doesn't show, okay? The county came out and I showed them the survey mark on the north side of the road, but there's no fence, and of course, the new property owner had no idea that, that there was a road there, I suppose.
So, you notified the county that there was an existing property stake?
Yes.
So, we look kind of funny right now, I'm guessing?
Well, I was the opinion they were going to come and, and resurvey it and, and show it, but I don't know whether they did or not.
That'd be the property owner's responsibility, wouldn't it? Not just you, but even the other.
Well, the other property owner, before he got a loan, would have to have had it surveyed, but I don't know.
And he did, and he did, but he surveyed to the fence instead of to the property line, which, which actually, basically.
Hopefully, he surveyed to a legal description.
Double taxation, what?
Hopefully, he surveyed to a legal description.
I don't think so.
That's how, I think that's how all banks, there's got to be a legal description that it was surveyed to.
Well, he surveyed to my property line, or to, to my property line, which is a basic sixteen and a half feet south, north of where he surveyed.
So, there's a property line dispute that we didn't know about.
So, what, you say there's a property stake? Is that like a wrought iron with there, or just some flag?
There was an inch and a quarter pipe, I think, driven into the ground. Yeah, I was there when it was put in, and, and the surveyor at that time put a lead cap on it, imprinted with all the information, but that cap is long gone. But the stake is still there.
Okay.
And I, I've maintained this, the, the other neighbors that have moved in, I've always talked to them and told them that I thought my property line was sixteen feet to the north, and they're welcome to use it, they just don't build and block off the access, and, and they respected that, but these guys, of course, weren't aware of that. When they were, they dug their, they dug their foundation, the surveyor was there, I stopped and I told him what the situation was, but he seemed to be more determined to do what he was told rather than what was right. I, I apologize for, I hated to see these people not get their house built. They should have had it built and into it by now, but because of this dispute, the county froze it, and that's where they've sent, but, and I apologize for that. I didn't mean to cause that kind of trouble, but I was interested in my property line for sure, and like I say, I've measured it twice, one from the southwest quarter section marker, and I still end up beyond my fence, and I measured my property itself, and I'm still short about twenty feet, almost. So, that puts me over twenty feet to the north into that guy's property. But now you know why the road disappeared.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mon. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question for Mr. Mon. I'm trying to make sure I understand clearly. Are you saying that the property owners there in that subdivision, they built their house on your property line or into your property?
Well, you'd have to look pretty close, but I believe it's just on it. I don't think they're over into it yet, but I don't know. I'd have to look a little closer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Mon? You've said that you've measured that. Did you personally measure that, or was, did you hire a survey to measure?
I personally measured it. Yeah.
Thank you. Was there another person that wanted, yes, please, a couple of you. Go ahead, come forward, please. State your name.
So, my name's Dirk Lewis, I'm supporting Owen and Brooke. They're the homeowners that are going to build on that lot. So, that subdivision was professionally surveyed, and that's actually happened twice now. They actually use GPSs for that. So, those are, those are done with satellites, so they're very accurate. These are professional companies that are paid lots of money to accurately tell us where those property lines are. There is a fence line that runs up that side of the property. It's pretty haggard. I mean, those posts are, look like they've been there a hundred and twenty years, but there's no old road tracks, there's, there's, like, there has not been a road there for years and years. When they developed that subdivision, they missed any kind of documentation, because someone would have had to have go back in the records, however many years, you guys can probably tell me better than, you know, but thirty-something, I imagine, to, to find this road that's not there. Any of those back properties would be serviced by that road. I can't tell exactly which one it is, because there's a red line through it, but that road services any kind of agriculture needs or anything back there. And then, with that being said, I also wanted to speak to what, what these guys have been through. They purchased this land in good faith, that it was free and clear. Title research was done on that, and this was missed on title research, because it wasn't, obviously, a big enough concern or a used road or had any kind of, of usage in probably the last sixty years. Obviously, that's a guess, but I mean, there's no tracks or history of tracks or anything that would, that would give us any inkling that there was road or transportation through there. So, it has been probably about, well, it's been over a year since these folks have begun the process of trying to build. If you guys have followed the market and understand what's been happening in the market, this situation has cost them over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in waiting. That's just the financial burden that they're going to be responsible for. On top of that, I don't know if you guys have, have heard what the interest rates are doing, but they're skyrocketing. So, every day that these folks can't build is, is costing them a tremendous amount of money. Now, I know that's not relevant to, obviously, a road that may have been missed, so, I mean, I think that we need to go back to the obvious information that, that there was no inkling, title people missed this, there's, that road has not been used, serviced, maintained in several years. It, it really shouldn't be there, you know? I understand that at one point in time, this road was used, maybe horse and buggy, I don't know, but what I'm telling you is it hasn't been recent, that's for sure, so, and, you know, these folks have been through several title reports to catch stuff like this, and it hasn't been caught, so.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, there's no evidence of a road, which we kind of gathered from what Mr. Mon said?
That's correct.
So, there's a fence.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know if that fence and what he says is a stake, property stake is there, or has anybody talked about that, or was that brought up to any surveyor that's been done on here?
So, all of our surveyors, they, there's irrigation pipe out there, but there's no property corner markers, so they went off their GPSs.
Because twenty feet or sixteen feet, we do.
Yeah, it is. Now, keep in mind also that this has been surveyed several times, right? Because this, this was actually a subdivision that was approved by the county at one point in time. So, this has been through, and, and, exactly, so this has been through.
Surveyor twice?
Well, I don't know who the county or, or the subdivision owner would have used. More than likely, no. More than likely, that would be a different surveyor. I can't prove that, of course, but when this subdivision is brought to, to county, all of that stuff is surveyed, assuming with the GPS, and this one should have been caught if it was a detrimental, you know, situation to the public's transportation, and two, it wasn't caught on any title reports as well. So, this has not been maintained, this has not been cared for in any way, so.
Well, I know we have a county survey, and before we, we decide to get involved in this as a county council, I think we ought to have the county surveyor go out and check it. One thing that we are running into on many, many, many situations is you've got a federal survey and you've got a Brigham Young survey, and we're about twenty feet off. Now, whether this has an impact on that, I don't know, but we got to be aware that that's there, and they can be off. And, Matt, how do we do county surveys now that we don't have a professional surveyor on staff?
I can either answer this after the public hearing or during the, during the public hearing, but we have met with Mr. Mon. We are aware of the monuments that he spoke of. We did our due diligence for weeks and weeks with the county surveyor, surveyed the property. We've tracked this back to almost patent from when it was fully developed, the Mon's property to the property to the north. We have, we have done the due diligence, probably more due diligence than what was done when the subdivision was approved by the county, and we are very confident that, that Mr. Mon has his full allotted property, and that where the property line currently is, is correct.
So, Mr. Mon's statement that he's been paying tax on this is, we still got to decide where that line lies? Because it would be interesting in his legal description, was that investigated as well?
It was.
Okay.
So, part of the reason that we investigated it is because, and if John has any legal advice he would like to add towards that, is that if these were done by blocks and lots, when the county vacates it, then half of that portion of that, whatever we vacate, would go back to certain property owners. Even in this case, we can't find anything that if this was vacated, that it would go back to the southern property owner or that they would share that, so.
So, it would all remain to the individual who bought it in full faith?
We, we believe that if this road is vacated, that all that property that is being vacated or any interest to that right-of-way, after we've vacated it, would, would remain to the north of the Mon's property, so.
All right, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like. I'm just concerned because I have.
We have your name, please.
Roger Pulsfer.
Thank you, Roger.
And I actually own property to the east, that the right-of-way stills there, and there has been transportation after horse and buggy, buggy, I just want that to be known. I'm sixty-eight years old, and I remember the roadway. The Stevenson's live in the house there by the bridge up a ways, and the people that lived there previous, they would use that roadway in their vehicles. It has been used as a road in my years. School buses didn't go on it, but people walked down it, and I'm in favor, you know, keeping it a right-of-way for people. Like Brother Mon said, let people use that right-of-way, because it's a safety thing, you know, and if they put in a sidewalk or something, people could still use it, but just so you know that that was used as a roadway in my age. So, I've been there since fifty-six. I don't remember fifty-six, but I've been there all my life, and it was a road.
You were born before fifty-six?
Fifty-four. I moved there when I was two.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but I've been there since.
I happen to know your age.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address, yes? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the S?
My name's Dave Best, former owner, I guess current owner of the Ag Rimander to the east. I have title reports dating back to nineteen sixty-eight that do not show a road there in the legal description. As mentioned, you know, markers and legal descriptions. County obviously has, as previously stated, has a map where it disappeared in seventy-one. We bought it in, we, being my family, bought it in May of nineteen ninety, thirty-two years ago. We bought it from a bankruptcy attorney. There were some odd encumbrances, irrigation roads, there was a right of way up by the cemetery. It took him a year and a half to clear that up. We got clear title from this bankruptcy attorney. I could provide his name. And that title shows some irrigation rightaways, some other things that were abandoned at that time. When I received clear title, including warranty deed, title insurance, that was surveyed by GPS to those markers, that road doesn't show up. When we bought that, and after that, in the spring of ninety-two, we put a wheel line there. Wheel line's been parked on that fence for nine months every year. That road is, it's not now a road, and since nineteen ninety, hasn't been a road. You know, I mean, whether I feel it's a road, or the neighbors feel it's not, either way, feelings really don't matter. If it doesn't show up on warranty deed, it doesn't exist. There've been, since we bought it, six title reports by two different title companies. There have been, and, and that's been in the last thirty-two years. In the last four years, there have been four staff reports. And for those of you that know Angie Zeterquist, if she can't find it, it doesn't. But four, four staff reports done by planning and zoning that do not show the road there. There's been, that's been surveyed by two different surveyors, professional surveyors in the county. I'd be happy to provide names. Two stakes in the ground by GPS that show, they reflect within inches of what that survey is, of what that, that map shows. The road between the first lot on the top, there's a sixty-foot right of way to the Ag Rimander, that road, whether it's a road or not, it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't landlock in conversations with the title company. There hasn't been a, a use for it. It doesn't landlock any piece of property. I could, I would be happy to produce all of that.
So on the map, where's the stake, as you recall?
Pardon me?
I say on this map here, where is the stake driven right now that all these fancy surveyors have come in and drawn? Where is the stake drawn on the left-hand side as it gets to the road?
Can I move that? Okay, there is, there's a telephone pole to the north side of the road right there. It was surveyed to a stake right there. On the other end, there is a stake in the ground right there. And none of that legal description of any of these title reports, these six title reports that have been done in the last thirty-two years, show anything that reflects legally established road. Is there a whole list? Questions?
So your point is, is those two stakes are back in with the orange line rather than that lime-green line, right? It's the very north part.
There were, there were actually what was prior reference to Brigham Young survey. And, and that's come out and been ironed out by these two surveyors in the county in the last, within the last five years. And my legal description matches what, the current legal description matches what I received in May of nineteen ninety. And it doesn't show that road.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
All right, okay.
How do you get access to the Ag Rimander? You own the agricultural remainder?
Yeah, so I own the house that, that's kind of in that corner, in that weird little, there's, and I used to own the piece that borders the cemetery. I've since sold that, but I still live in that home right there, plus the Ag Rimander. Total's about eight acres.
And you just get through with that little dirt road?
So the home is, the home is a separate tax ID number that is accessed by a one-rod right of way to the very north of the Ag Rimander. And it, it, I mean, it kinda, it kinda shows that. There's, there's a road going up there to that. And so that's how that parcel is accessed, is by that, by that road right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best. All right. Any other comments on this public hearing?
Could I make one comment?
Sure, Mr. Mon.
The reason the road never shows.
Could you please come to the mic, Mr. Mon? Yeah, you tell us.
The reason the road never shows is because my property line was on the north side of the road. There was no property line ever surveyed or ever developed on the south side. So all the maps, all it does is show my property line being on the north side without, without the county's legal use of the road, even though they did maintain it because it was open to the public. Well, they didn't really maintain it, but it was there.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Okay, it's been, oh, was there another person?
He was cordial enough to let.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's how I move. You made a movement, so.
Yeah, you're fine. I'm Owen Kemper, and this is my fiancee Brooke. We're actually the landowners that just bought the lot. You know, we bought the lot, you know, it's been about a year now. And, you know, it was our knowledge that the county had done, you know, their homework in the surveys, that this was a subdivision that was approved by the county. And up until Mr. Mon called, we were building. I mean, we have trusses sitting on our lot and a hole dug, and we're, you know, we're spending a lot of money trying to get this going. And, you know, I mean, just the four weeks that it has to sit out there. And I think the thing that bothers me the most is that it's my knowledge that was, when this was subdivided, that the paperwork was mailed out to landowners, and Mr. Mon had the opportunity at that time to fight this and say, hey, there was a road here. This was subdivided for a house. So his knowledge, and this was subdivided, David, I don't, years ago, to my knowledge, years ago. So I just, yeah, I just feel like it's, it's not right that now that we're building and there's stuff going in, that now it's time to speak on it, when he had, you know, a couple of years ago, before we decided to build.
To even buy.
Yeah, before we even moved to Utah, to, you know, come in and decide, hey, you know, there was a road there. It's just now that we decided to build, that he says this. And our other thing was, you know, we thought about, you know, we could move the house. We can move the house to the north if that's gonna make. But to my knowledge, the county has no idea where this road exists. There's no, no one can figure out where exactly the road is. So how are we supposed to move our house and comply with this if there's nobody that knows where this road is? There's no legal record of it. There's no legal deed. We had title searches done. David had title searches done. And there's no record of this road, period. And when we first saw the lot, I mean, there's clear as day, there's no one ever drove on this lot. And if they are driving, they're driving straight through David's land. There's a fence in, in this so-called road, they're either driving through the barbed wire fence, or they're driving straight through David's land.
Did you start construction before you had a conditional use permit to do it?
No. So, and like I said, my biggest thing is just, if there is this road there, I feel like there should've been said something. Cuz my understanding that there was a council meeting to approve this subdivision by the county. And when those notices were sent out, Mr. Mon should've then come and said, hey, there's a road here. And then, instead of now that we're hundreds of thousands of dollars deep into this, he decides to then come and say, you can't build there, so.
I would like to add that even if we moved our house sixteen and a half feet to give way for this right of way and had a thirty-foot easement off of that, the way our house lays, I don't even believe it would be buildable. We would, we would be over the easements, how they are now, and this was sold to us as a buildable property.
I was, I mean, it's a subdivision approved, and, you know, here we are now. I mean, we should be in our house by now. And it's just, I mean, it makes me sick, but, you know, we're trying to jump through the hoops. We're trying to, you know, respect David Mon, or Gary Mon. And it's, like I said, the biggest frustrating part is that this could've been solved before we even moved here. I mean, this had the option, he had the option, he had the time to be able to come here and say, you know, there's a road there. Let's get this figured out before it's turned into a subdivision. So that's, that's our point, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, are anybody else before I?
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak, but I don't know if you want that during the hearing or after.
Go ahead.
John Luthy, county attorney. My suggestion is that, as Matt has said, that the Public Works Department has done ample due diligence, and, and I, I would trust the, the subdivision boundary line. That being said, the resolution before you would vacate the right of way to the extent that it's in the subdivision, to the north of that subdivision line, to the north of what the county believes is Mr. Mon's property. It wouldn't vacate a right of way to the extent that it's to the south of the subdivision line and maybe on Mr. Mon's property. Matt could speak to this better than me, but my understanding from Matt is that current in road engineering standards would say that even if the county were to maintain a right of way for a road there, that it would be unsafe to put a road back through to dump onto the, the main highway as it comes up on that curve. The Mon's tonight have indicated that it might be nice to have the, the right of way there for a sidewalk to the extent that part of the right of way may be on the Mon's property. I think the county would be happy to accept a dedication of that, so that it's clear that it's a right of way and could be still used by the public as a walking path on that side of the property line. But, but I, I would, I would still recommend vacation of the right of way to the extent that it's on the subdivision side of that line. And that's what the resolution before you does, is vacate the right of way to the extent that it sits on the subdivision property.
So, John, if I, if I'm hearing your eyes, I'm looking at this. To the, to the south piece on Mr. Mon's property, under all the, the yellow square there, which says road to be vacated. We'd still have kind of a right of way there for a walking trail, sidewalk type of thing. Then once you get to the east, where you see kind of that red line, it would just then continue on to the roadway. So it could be more of a walking than a, than a roadway. And I understand what you're saying from the road piece, cuz on that corner, they don't want that intersection to be on the corner for traffic flow and, and things like that.
That's what I'm suggesting. I, I will say that because it's a road by public use, and it's never been judicially determined how wide it is, like Matt mentioned, and exactly where it sits, we don't have a legal description of the road itself, other than to know that it was there. And, and so the resolution says to the extent that that road, right of way that's there, is within the subdivision, the county would be vacating it. And we may be able to show that another part of that right of way is on Mr. Mon's property, or he could acknowledge it by dedication.
If we do what you're saying, we vacate, but then we put a right of way for a sidewalk, how does that still impact current owners who have started their house there?
It would be south of that property line, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it would.
It would not.
Impact their development.
Paul, the one thing that you mentioned there, that we still might have a, a right of way for a sidewalk, that's not true. If we vacate that, we vacate. There's no, there's no way that we can claim a right of way for a sidewalk. And so we need to understand that if we vacate it, there is no right of way through there.
Respectfully, Mr. Zillis, we, you would be vacating it to the extent that it lies in the subdivision. That's the way the resolution is written.
Only the portion of the possible road that would be within that subdivision is the portion that we'd be vacating. Anything to the south of there, whatever it may be, we still would retain?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion that been, been made and seconded that we close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you, John. All right. Okay. Yep, let's go to D. Thank you. Okay, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen, open twenty-twenty-two cash county budget. Cameron, you have. Go ahead, Cameron, thank you.
So this resolution, I know only got to your availability this afternoon. Not sure how much you've had a chance to look over it. The initial reason for this resolution was to introduce the recommendations from the Budget Committee to the council regarding spending of the ARPA funds. And so you'll note that many of the items on this resolution will start with ARPA, for example, number two. Says ARPA, and then describes what follows. So each one of those is a recommendation from the Budget Committee for spending on those items. There are additional items that have come on to this amendment, including some grant funding. Also, the sheriff spoke to you at our last meeting regarding additional funding for the animal impound facility. There are a number of other issues also. So I may begin by just asking if anyone has had a chance to look at that, and are there any questions?
No, I haven't had a chance to look at it except items like number one, cuz I was at the talk, cuz we got this late. But I do have a question about that.
Okay.
Instead of pulling that out of appropriated fund balance, can we pull that out of the ARPA money that was the, I forget the wording, eligible?
Oh, out of, out of the standard allowances, is what you're asking.
Yes, those two seem opposite to me.
So that is, that is a possibility, yes, that could be from there. There was a motion made for this funding, but there was no indication of where to pull it from, so that was the suggestion. But, but yes, that, that could come from standard allowance.
So you're saying that, yes, it can be done?
Yes.
Out of the ARPA funds?
Yes, out of the standard allowance.
I had a department had called me and visited Cameron about a request on, on to this fund of getting some software for our building department and our, our inspectors and whatnot. Did that make it into this?
So the recommendations right now coming from the Budget Committee were only those that were eligible other than the standard allowance. So there's a whole list of things that were applied for that would qualify for standard allowance, but were not considered by the Budget Committee at this point, just because of the volume of, of considerations to make.
Is there a possibility that that can be re-resurrected, or where are we at with that?
No, so there needs to be additional meetings to still go over some of those requests. All of the requests have not been considered at this point.
Are you talking about, oh, I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
You have that score sheet that went through all that, and that's what the Budget Committee went through on each of them, right?
Yes, yes. But, but those that qualified under standard allowance only and not under any other method were not considered.
So that's a possibility in the future to be considered?
Yes.
Is the funds all gonna be gone before those things are considered?
The standard allowance, there was many more requests for funding than there is funding. So there's ten million dollars, as you may already know. There was about twenty million dollars in requests for that pot of money.
Gordy, are you talking about making electronic, making it paperless, going electronic permitting and that type of thing? Is that what you're referring to? Cuz we did talk about that.
The way it was explained to me is that there's a program out there that would really, really help the, the building department and the inspectors department, that once you entered in a that once you entered in a subdivision or something, that the software would track it, and that it would save, in the future, a lot of time and effort by those departments. And it was his estimated that it would for sure in time save one hired individual, and in the future, as much building as we're going to be doing, would probably save possibly two hired individuals. And, and he was a little discouraged that he didn't think that he would even been heard.
I thought we were kind of talking about that.
So, so the online permit system, if that's what we're talking about, was eligible, and is number 13 on the bottom of page two.
Is that something?
Has been recommended, if that's what you're talking about. But I don't, I don't know. Yeah. Or, sorry, can he clarify?
Chris, let me just ask you a quick question, so I make sure that I have a good understanding of this.
Okay.
So that standard amount that we have, $10 million?
Yes.
Anything in this document that says ARPA, isn't that $10 million?
That's correct.
We've got another bucket of money that needs to be used for specific things.
Yes.
How big is that bucket?
Approximately 15 million.
So we're talking $25 million, 15 of it.
Well, and we didn't use up, there's
Right, there's Anything that says ARPA is in that 15 million.
It's in that $15 million bucket, yes.
We still have a $10 million bucket that we could just use to throw a party.
If, a standard government service party.
I'm guessing by what he explained to me and what you've pointed out, that it was probably 13. Now, he did reference Dirk, that he talked to Dirk about it. Do you remember any conversation with the, the building inspector department on an application?
Dirk said in the budget meeting where we
So I, I, I've been working with the Finance Department or Office on this. That's my employee that we work with, and he's had a lot of conversations with me. I've had those conversations with Dirk. I've had those conversations with, had those conversations with the Budget Committee. So we're aware of those pieces. I guess the question I would ask is if that, excuse me, if that's follow, following within the eligible pot, or if it's within the other pot? Right?
This is our, our online permit, it was recommended by the Budget Committee, it's in the $15 million.
It's anticipated to be funded, if everything moves as, as anticipated. So, that's been discussed to great extent, and that's been communicated also back to that employee. But probably since you've discussed it.
Okay. I just don't want it to fall through the thing, because I didn't represent him well, because it sounded like a pretty good thing to me.
It, we agree. And we've had very good support, I want to say, from all those who have looked at it and discussed it. And he's very interested in making sure it gets there. So I understand his follow-up, and I just want you all to be aware that there has been a lot of, of communication and follow-up on that specific project.
Okay.
Wherever you are, I'm sorry that I gave this a
No, no.
side turn. We went, we went up over the mountain.
We're used to it, Gordy.
Yeah.
Another issue that, that came in on this amendment is, starting here on 14, on page three, see a transfer of remaining fund balance from our Capital Projects Fund back into our Municipal Services Fund. And this is representing funds that had been transferred over in connection with the construction of the road facility. That project was signed off and completed last year with Bond Council, and there is some additional useful things for that funding. So as we transfer it back to Municipal Services, there's requests for, for use of some of that money still at, at that facility. Some of it signage and things like that, and, and small amounts, but also, as you, it's kind of like trying something out new, and you find some additional needs that maybe weren't anticipated. Those are being requested here as well. And each one of those items is kind of lined out there, starting mostly there with, again, the transfer is in item number 14, but then those ensuing items after that are the requests to use those funds. And the, which add up to about 300,000. I think if you were all provided a memo on this from our Public Works, the rest of it then would be contributed to the fund balance of Municipal Services Fund, and just saved for later use on other projects. And then I didn't catch, may have other larger items. Number 29 and 30 relate to Restaurant Raps Tax Awards. As you know, we already, in the previous amendment, re-appropriated funding related to purchase orders of all sorts throughout all of the county. We did not include the purchase orders or encumbrances that were tied to the Raps Restaurant Tax Funds. Now, these aren't like specific orders in a sense of, we have a department head wanting to get supplies. These are purchase orders that are made when we make an award, when the council approves those awards to the separate entities. We attach a PO to that, so that it's, it's there. It's likely that most of this funding wouldn't be spent in the current year. We've been surprised a couple of times at the amount when we've tried to make estimates. Last year, we took the approach of just saying, let's appropriate all of those funds that have awards attached to them already, and then whoever finishes their project, we know we have funding in the budget for it. So, that's what items number 29 and 30 are doing in those two funds. And, and so literally, every award that's ever been made, that hasn't been completed and paid for, is, is being requested to be appropriated.
So all that money's already been spoken for?
Yes.
That's not, any of those funds are going to be tied to a project that we've already approved? So if it's a, if it's something that Bart's doing down at the fairground that he hasn't finished yet, for whatever reason, this money's getting moved to that, and it's already?
Yeah, county funds already be there, so this would be more like Mill door Province or Logan. Whoever has an award, and say you awarded out $100,000 for whatever the project is, we've attached a PO then that tracks that project. So when they submit for a reimbursement, we have a number that they can reference back to. This is appropriating all the funds that have been presented, that have been approved, but have not been paid out or reimbursed to the awardee. So, nothing new here.
Hey, I've got a great idea.
Right, right.
This is already spoken for money.
Right. And this wouldn't be spent for, yeah, yeah. And we can re-provide those, but it's the same Yeah, we certainly can.
So there are no, there are no monies that are automatically sent to the cities, right?
No, so
From the Raps Restaurant.
So Raps Tax has a component in, in the recreation that is based on population.
Right.
But even for those, we've been requesting a, a letter.
They have to, basically, they send in for reimbursements.
Yeah. So, so they'll say, this is, well, it can be in advance, but it has to be stated, this is what we're using these funds for. Yeah.
Okay.
Have we not in the past years ago, on population, sent Raps money to the cities with no request?
Quite a while ago, it used to be done that way, yeah.
Like I remember of us, just because of population, they got a portion of that money, just because of
Yeah. So, I think it was in 2011, we went through a legislative audit on, on Raps Tax specifically. And the legislative audit at the time pointed out that if we disperse it that way, we can't document or demonstrate compliance with what those funds are eligible to be used for. So at that point, we started requiring that they request their funds, and in the letter of request, they detail out what they're going to be using funds for, or they want to be reimbursed because they've already spent funds.
So the money is used according to what the definition of the Raps Restaurant?
Right, to those eligible uses in the state code.
So that's been the policy for over 10 years?
Yeah.
It's always good to have documentation, right?
No, it just seemed to me like years and years ago, like I remember hearing Lynn Lemon say that the city's qualified for X amount of the Raps money, just on population. And I said, that's not fair, because we don't get any Raps Tax money on the unincorporated area, because we haven't got a way of applying it. And so that just went to the county. You know, they was the one that requested that money. But I know there was a concern that it was just given out this year, and it was objected to, and now we've clarified.
But yeah, no, in fact, there, there are cities we've reached out to who have not sent their request in, and so we've held on to those.
Okay.
And then I think I must have passed, so I'll try to back up to, one other large issue has to do with all the land exchange over there by the North Heritage, number 12, the North Logan High School, the Green Canyon High School, the ice rink, and all of the land that went on there. As you recall, that land was obtained many years ago, decades ago, through a grant. And it, part of the requirement of that grant is that land, or, or equivalent, we'll say, stay as recreation land. And so, we're about eight years into this process, where that land has been exchanged with other municipalities, and the county is divesting itself of that land. And there's four parcels that have been for sale. Three of them have been sold. We're, we're in negotiations on that fourth parcel. But there, there was an agreement contemplated, I would say. I can't, I can't find from any of the participating entities that we executed a contract. But certainly, there's an expectation on the part of participating entities, and, and they've detailed them out here, North Logan, Hyde Park, and Nibley, that, that agreed to be part of this conversion process, and they, they bought lands, and they started developing those into recreation lands. And they receive an allocation of Raps Restaurant Tax each year to help them develop those properties. But part of that contemplation was that they would be reimbursed for that land acquisition when the properties, those four parcels, sold. At this point, because of the sales that have taken place already, we have the funding to reimburse on those. And so as I discussed this issue with the executive, he indicated that he would like to see that be on this amendment as well, that we can pay then on those property developments in the other municipalities.
All right. Do you have anything else, Cameron?
Now, what, now, you said that there was an agreement. Do we have, but it was verbal?
Well, so there's a contract that clearly was being developed. And there were, there were additional municipalities initially that were participating in this. Right at the end, I think a number of them pulled out. And in the end, I, I don't have
The city was one that pulled out.
I think they pulled out early. There were others that were participating almost to the end, and then pulled out. But I've, I've reached out to each one of those municipalities. I've reached out into our own clerk's office. I researched it myself. We can't come up with an executed contracted document.
All right. Carol, where are you? I understand you have some, something to add for this? Is that correct, for the budget?
Yes, because this didn't end up in the budget. So it's not in there, as I understand. Okay. It was just the, I just wanted to, I, I was told that ARPA funds were discussed, and that there were questions, but there's not a follow-up committee meeting with the Budget Committee. So I thought before we went any farther, I would ask if you had any questions. Or do you want me to go back to the Budget Committee and have a meeting with them? It's up to you. Carol, you were telling me that you were concerned about some of the funding that you were going to run out of in Yes. victims. And so, if we don't, if we go back, we're going to have to do another budget opening. And if this is a crisis situation for you, then I think that amendment could be made if the council agrees to add this in. Okay, so our crisis funding is basically food, utilities, cellphone bills. We have purchased a gas card a couple of times, but it's primarily the utilities, cellphone bills, and, and food. Once in a while, we'll pay rent. We have noticed an increased number of people that don't have a place to live, and so law enforcement will call us and ask if we can put them somewhere. CDBG, or, or actually Bragg across the street, does have funding, but if it's a Friday afternoon, is when sometimes we get our calls, there's nothing we can do over the weekend. So, I had talked to Gina, and one of my applications in this was for those crisis necessities that we use primarily on the weekends. If the amount we want to look at, or what it is we want to look at, and you want me to go back to the Budget Committee, that would be great. If we want to look at some crisis funding for the next couple of months, until my grant renews in July, that would also be really helpful, on those basic necessities of life. I believe the, are, are we approving any, are you looking at any ARPA funding right now? Yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Because it's my understanding that the training, because I do have some first responders that want to go to a peer support training in June, and so I do want to see if that would also get approved. But the crisis necessities are what I'm really, I'm really making.
What were the three items again, Carol? Food?
Food, utilities, and cellphone bills are together.
Okay.
And then any rent assistance or hotel assistance for, just temporarily. One of them, too? Yes, and childcare. I guess there's a few more than three.
Carol, this, this here first item that goes with the workforce training for 75 people, have we got 75 people in here, in the county, to that type of training?
We have several hundred victims that probably could use it. However, that's something that probably we'd want to discuss with the Budget Committee, because there, there are programs. Bridgerland has programs. It's, it's trying to get victims connected to those programs. And so, so I'm okay if we look at that with the Budget Committee.
Well, the challenge that I've got is the amount that each person is supposed to receive, and it's for training.
Like work for, like a job program is, I went online, and it looked like the average was about $2,000. There are programs that are a little bit more and a little bit less.
So where are we sending them for this?
Bridgerland.
We're going to pay Bridgerland $2,000 per person?
That's what the programs are, more than that, and sometimes some are less.
How long do they last?
Anywhere for, I, I believe a CNA program is really easy, I, I mean, in terms of time. But there are programs that usually last about a year.
Okay. That 2,000 for those programs that last a year, is that cover the whole year, or is that a per month, or how does that work?
This would be, some of the programs are 3,000, 4,000, and 5,000 dollars, so it would be toward that program, or they could look at, it's kind of like our Cash Achieve program. We don't not, we do not use funds out of the county attorney's office for Cash Achieve. Cash Achieve is a program we set up where we send low-level offenders to Bridgerland to learn a trade. They have to pay for it, so they usually go at the lower end in terms of time. But sometimes we have people that will want to go to one that's a year long, or, or 15 months long. We were trying to think of ways that, so I, the, all the victim advocates sat down, and we said, what could we do if we, if we were going to apply for funding, what could we do to help victims of crime in this valley? With needs outside of just the criminal justice system. Going to court, preparing them for trial, getting them through a trial, that's, that's great. But there are other things that we know that victims need. Job training seems to be a big one for our domestic violence victims. Carol, there's a second part to your proposals. Proposal is, well, on the second page, talking about the premium pay for central workers, and you were explaining to me that our victims' advocates, workers, only get paid $20 when they go out on a Yeah, they get the $20 pager pay, but then if they're out, we, and I apologize, we've never compensated any of us for, I mean, we've just been doing this for a while, for, I don't know, four, five, six years. And I just, that's what we get, $20 pager pay. So when we go out, like I had a victim advocate out of the sheriff's office that was out six times, one, one week. So she went to work every day, but she was also out every night. And so what we did was, I looked at that, and I, I said, well, could we use some of the premium pay for the victim advocates? When we started getting on-call money, our pager pay money, because it was coming through a grant, primarily through a grant, I thought we could document everything, because federal grants require so much documentation. So we created a spreadsheet, and it basically gives the date, the case number, what kind of case it was, who went out, and, and some of the services and, and general time that we spent out on scene. So I've already got that for grant purposes. So that's what this is based on. And I broke it down into two sections. One is for this last year. One is for this last year, the other would be for the next two years. And through December 31st, when the COVID, the ARPA funds are ending. So.
Okay, that explains that.
Can you tell us about the mobile mental health outreach? There was some question in the committee because there's already a, a mobile outreach. The MCOT team. And, and I'm okay to hold off on that and do a little bit more. I would, what we're seeing is when we have a crisis, a significant crisis, a shooting, a really bad suicide, not that any are good, but I mean, a homicide, anything that is a sudden and unexpected traumatic, really, really traumatic event, we have, we have one therapist, two therapists that are willing to go out on scene. So I go back to Labor Day weekend, we had 11 deaths that we handled in 84 hours. They were traffic accidents, suicides, overdoses. It was just one thing after another. We ended with a farm accident, and my one crisis therapist, Jody, had gone to a wedding out of state. I could not find a crisis therapist. That was a horrific scene. And I finally called our MSW intern at the time and said, I need you to go out there with us because we need somebody to provide some therapy to this family. It was just a horrific scene involving several families. And so we were, and, and that's one that I would be, I, I would love to sit down, we don't have to approve that or even discuss it much. It would be good to sit down and figure out what to do. If we, if we can move towards some sort of receiving center, great. But our patrol officers get called out, we get called out to, to crises situations, and we're the only ones that go out. And so it's been a real problem, more so for the deputies and law enforcement officers in the valley that respond out, somebody's in crisis, what do you do? Well, you can text this one line, or you can call and talk to somebody. And when somebody's in acute crisis, a phone call or texting just isn't going to cut it. So this is one that I would really like to explore with the county to figure out what we do with this mental health crisis that we're experiencing here. Because it's not getting better.
Carol, on this number of people served, it says 400, is, what timeframe is that?
That would be over the, I think I had that from like June 1st to, June 1st of 2022 to December 31st of 2024.
Okay.
It's, it's only for primarily the most serious cases. We're really struggling. We had a meeting, we had a debriefing last week, and we do have a couple of therapists now that have reached out. But I want you to know that I have reached out to therapists. Crisis work is not, nobody really wants to do it. It's hard, it's, it's ugly and it's awful, basically. So people don't really want to do crisis work when people are hysterical and somebody's just died, or, or there's been a horrible traffic accident or something. So that's one that I've tried to figure out what, how to best help community members in this valley with the mental health crisis that we're seeing. And then our training would be on our first responders, peer support training. That's the one that I was really hoping to get some funding today because I've got a couple of people out of the sheriff's office that are part of peer support that really need to go to peer support training. They're supposed to be certified. Is it certified chat or licensed? I don't, peer support, is it certified? They go to a.
It's just training.
Okay. Like our victim advocates are certified, but law enforcement, I think there's some sort of credential program that they go through, and this would be it. And then, and then I would really like to do another, some sort of violence prevention program next year. And again, that's something that can be discussed at another time. But it's mainly our crisis work and our training that we're looking at.
Any questions for Carol?
Any, come on, does anybody have, come on, somebody's got a question for me?
I already asked mine.
Yes, Mike. The chocolate's good. I'll answer your question.
No, my question is, I just, I'm going through my head that all of these corporations, that we get used to them, and when they dry up, and when something changes.
I will not come back and ask for funding.
I know, but we'll see just how much good they've done.
Yeah.
And want to continue with them.
I have a comment.
And then people's taxes, you know, everything's, it's all going to, you know, it's going to be kind of a knee-jerk reaction at the very end, saying, now what do we do?
When we've had VOKA.
You have succeeded. You got success, success, you know, all the way through, and then all of a sudden, now we have no money for it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, it's hard to prepare for the future when you know that the well's going to be dry.
Right, it is.
In 2024.
It's hard. We have had VOKA one-time funds over the years, and VAAL one-time funds, and once those funds are gone, everybody on my team knows they're gone, and there's not a lot we can do with them. Whether it's great or not, there are some really good things that we've done that we have not had the funding continue for it, and there's just nothing we do, we can do about that.
But there's a lot of these things, if you don't do that while you do have funds, we won't even make a dent in what's happened the past couple of years.
Right.
So I understand that.
The comment I'd like to make here is, I look on the second page, and all these people that's put in all these hours and all this, I'm in support of your request for that simply because, you know, they have a salary and they go to work every day, and then all of a sudden they're called to after-hours with no funding. I don't think there's hardly any other county, county workers that are asked to do that. Once in a while, the, the people on the snowplow will be called out, but then they get overtime, so they are compensated. And that's really what you're asking here, is for overtime compensation.
We discussed that in the budget committee, but.
That has to be addressed.
That has to be addressed from HR and some of the things as far as other departments go.
Yeah.
So that's why Amy's coming running up here real fast?
Yes. Because it was my fault. I mean, I never even thought about it, so I.
So if we do it for her, then we're looking at other departments and other things. So this becomes a whole entailed thing, is what we discuss from the budget committee, right?
We talked about needing to write a policy.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we already do it for the firemen, aren't we?
There's been a misunderstanding with the victim advocates and how they've been being paid. John and Cameron and I have a meeting to discuss that coming up in the next few days, and so we'll be addressing that and taking care of it. Cameron and I were not aware of how that was being paid, and so we will be addressing that immediately, so.
So you're saying that you guys are addressing this issue here and are going to make up some wages, or what is it that you're saying?
We're not sure what needs to happen at this point, but that could be a possibility, Barbara.
Okay.
As I remember from being in the budget committee, all of these items that Carol was talking about, we wanted as a committee to have her come and address this so that then we could hear what was going on and be able to recommend to the council how to move those forward. So I would ask that the council would respect the budget committee and how it's been put together and why we have that, and take that recommendation from them.
Thank you, Amy.
I guess what you're saying is now we've got a document to look at as to what is actually happening that we didn't have before.
Right, right. And if we could get a budget meeting, a committee, I was just, I was told the budget committee had questions, but there was no meeting, and so that's why. That's what happened. We didn't set another meeting on this, as we remember, and I know. I was told, I was under the impression we had this discussion tonight. I asked Carol to be here because I was concerned about some of these things when she said she was running out of money and didn't, they're having to pick and choose what they fund for victims, and this is ARPA money that will fit for that. And it seemed to me that it's, to me, it seems like a no-brainer to fund some of these critical needs that her department has. And I'm happy to go to the budget committee, I just need a meeting set, and I don't know how to do that. Because we'd still need another public hearing, and then by, I mean, it just gets farther and farther, and, you know, the need gets greater and greater as those funds dwindle down.
Oh, you could comment. Carol and I work closely. I'm in support of all of this as a process matter. I, I think that not only is there a public hearing needed, but that Carol's proposals tonight, other than the one for training that's already on the amendments that have been noticed, would need to go out in a, in a noticed amendment for, for the next public hearing. And that this, most of this is informant or information because there wasn't a budget committee meeting.
Okay.
And we do have urgency. But the one that can be acted on tonight is the one for training that's in the amendment that's been noticed.
Okay. So John, you're saying we can't amend the budget for anything that's not on this paper, although we have done that in the past?
I've, I've been reading through the code sections, and they say that there's amendments to a budget fund, and there needs to be notice in a public hearing. And then you can make adjustments after the hearing, but it does seem like if, that that, you would make adjustments to things that the public could know you were going to be talking about so they could come and comment on it. And so to, to have a proposed amendment that doesn't address a particular item at all, and then say that, well, the public should have known that after the hearing was closed, we were going to do an amendment and do that, it does seem to go outside of the, the idea of give the public notice of what the amendment will be and give them an opportunity to comment. So while that doesn't help Carol and I with, with these requests, I think that is the, there ought to be some indication in the noticed amendments that that would, that that may happen in that budget opening.
So the proper procedure would be to have a budget meeting, have the presentation at the budget meeting from Carol, and then do a public hearing notice? Is that what you're saying, John?
Yeah. More, more specifically, I'm saying that whatever amendment gets noticed, because the notice says the amendment is available for inspection, the public can see what, what amendments are going, are contemplated, and then can come and comment on those. If there's no indication in the notice of something, it seems like it defeats the purpose of public notice. My understanding is that in the current amendment, that was proposed amendments that have been noticed, the training, the adjustment for the training budget is there and can be acted on, and these other things we have to get refined and into a proposed amended budget that is noticed.
Okay, just so I'm clear and understanding, so that we could, we could amend it, but we can't really act upon it until a public hearing is scheduled?
I'm not sure that I understand.
We can't amend it.
We can't amend it at all right now, tonight? Is that what you're saying?
Unless it's on there. So like, we could, could we not expand the training, right?
Yeah, I think if it's reasonably related to the things that are there in what was noticed of, you can make adjustments and expand the training or contract it or whatever. But to just add in additional amendments that the public would have had no notice that you may be doing it so they could come and, and comment on it, I think is where it gets problematic.
Okay, thank you.
And there may be some gray, gray area in there as to whether what you now decide to tinker with is within what was noticed or without.
Okay. Thank you. All right, is there, you're finished, Carol?
I am.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted?
Still a public hearing.
Yeah, still a public hearing. Anyone else that needed or wanted to address these issues for the budget?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing on the, on the Resolution 2022-14 on the cash county budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. So just again, do we need to set another public hearing then on the budget?
I think we have to. It's put on an agenda.
Right.
To do that again.
All right. So it needs to go on the agenda?
My question would be, if we're, if we're dispersing ARPA funds, would this not fall under that category? And could we not expand? Because we're doing a lot of ARPA fund things, that's just.
Yeah.
Because that's, that was my thinking with moving, you know, when I asked Carol to come, well, we're doing ARPA funds, this is ARPA funds.
So the public would have noticed to come and comment on the use of ARPA funds? We could read it more broadly that way.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think I could sign off on that idea. I may want to have someone who deals with budgets more regularly than me weigh in.
So, yeah, John and I had talked about this earlier, but as you've mentioned, that type of change in the amendments has been done in the past, so it's kind of new to me to discuss what could or couldn't be added to an amendment at this stage. I tend to see things more.
Excuse me, Cameron, just one minute. Do we need to reopen the public hearing where it's been closed now that we have additional comments?
No.
Okay. Okay, very good. I'm sorry, Cameron, go ahead.
I, I think, I think if there's been history of, of just wholly new amendments, and this at least falls within that ARPA funding was noticed of, I could be, I could give the opinion that that could be okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so I really wouldn't have anything to add to me that was kind of a legal opinion on how we should or shouldn't be doing things. I'm reconsidering things by tradition versus what the codes actually say. So I, I do, on, on the flip side, you know, someone may say, well, I thought, you know, we were talking about spending it in these ways, I didn't know we were going to introduce a new way of spending that, but I, I don't know that that would bar anything. I, I would have to defer on that opinion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to 11A. Okay, we're back to this. Ordinance 2022-14, an ordinance to vacate any public right-of-way along 10940 South, lying north and within the boundary lines of the 165 subdivision in Avon.
Chris is just bringing up the parcel and zoner viewer map so that if we want to look at different things, or look closer, or zoom in, we can, as you guys have your discussion, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you, since you're there. You said that your department has gone and looked at this in depth, and I just wondered if you could maybe reiterate that a little bit, because I just want to make sure if we do something, I, I know that Mr. Mann was concerned that he had been paying property taxes on this portion in, in question, and I wanted to find out if, if we knew for sure that he hadn't, because that is a concern that I have.
So I guess I would start by saying that since this road was by prescriptive use, there is no deeds, there is no, there is no minus out of someone's land, you know, the deeds don't say, you know, minus out of county right-of-way along the north side. So by vacating this, it does not change any property lines, it does not change any of that. We're, we're vacating a prescriptive right-of-way that has, that was, you know, that was formed by legal basis with the code, so.
But we're only, according to this ordinance, we are only vacating that, the, the portion of the right-of-way that is lying north and within the boundary lines of the subdivision.
That is correct.
So any right-of-way that we may still have that might be south of that, that boundary line, we still maintain.
Yes.
Even though it's shrunk, whatever it is.
Correct.
Okay.
So if, if we, if, you know, one of the other property owners comes and they have a map that shows from 1930 that the county doesn't have a record of, that we didn't find in our due diligence, and there happens to be a road that was 66 feet wide through that subdivision, we, that would all be vacated. If they showed a property line or, or a road that was south of that along the Mann's property that, that exists, we're not vacating that. So if there is anything on the Mann's property right-of-way that the county has interest to, we're not vacating that. Chris, Chris pulled this up, so just for a little bit of a reference, if we zoom in, this property, where my cursor is, is the Mann's property. So if we look at where the bridge is that's currently there, where, where it crosses and where the Mann's property line is shown, the road and the bridge is all north of his property line. So where we're debating is this piece here in the, in the 165 subdivision, but that road would have continued along here. So he, so again, if this is not the true property line according to Mr. Mann, then the county, by vacating this, is not changing the property line.
No.
So he would still have. So he would still have some kind of legal issue between him and his neighbors, but in our due diligence and the county surveyor that's gone out there, he is very confident, as well as the other surveyors who produced these subdivision plats and did their surveys, that the monuments are in the correct location. We do have very, very good evidence from a UDOT map when 165 was created that shows this property line and this fence in the same exact location. So the fence that the the that has been discussed shows up on that UDOT map and it is in this area. There is a right of way, or I I wouldn't say right of way, but there is an existing fence that used to be here and that road is was in between those fences. So to all of our due diligence, our research from the county surveyor to any deeds we could find, the recorder spent hours on this, the surveyor spent hours on this. We, the county has exhausted all the resources that we could in a timely fashion, knowing that this is affecting some people's livelihood. And and to our best, the road was north of of that property line and there is no, we feel like the property lines where they are have been well established, so. If there is, if there is something between property owners and boundary line disputes, this this right of way vacation is not changing those.
One big thing that on that is that it is so close to that turn, we would not want an ingress or egress onto that road because of that. You wouldn't even design one that close to that turn, would you?
No.
To come out of there.
If if you want my engineering opinion, this is probably not where the county would want to have some kind of access onto that road. It's not the site zones and the hazards for having, that's not a road that the county would want to expand and make into some public road that's 66 feet wide where we had a lot of traffic. It's not a safe location, so.
Go that way up and up, there's a, there's a green line north of that road, right there where your pointer is. What in the world is that definite line all the way from the top to the bottom?
That I do not know.
Up, up, right, across the yellow, no, get it right on the yellow line, get.
Right here?
Now you go up right there, there is a definitely green line that tells me that there's a different grade for some reason.
Our research shows that that's where that road was, was on that was through that property. And the marker that has been discussed was about 16.5 feet north of where the current property lines are established.
It's obvious, as a farmer, you would pick that out, that the the actual surface of the ground right there is not the same as when you go further north. And so it's causing the swather to do something different.
It's not great necessarily, it's less productive, is how you kind of see.
Maybe so, maybe less. There's definitely a line there.
Yeah.
So so I'm I'm here more representing what, you know, from the road department, from public works department, this road was essentially vacated, we haven't been maintaining, we haven't done anything. We're cleaning it up from that standpoint. I know that there may be, you know, a subdivision that was proposed or there's land issues, but in my opinion, this isn't, if there is any of those issues, they would still exist.
Does Mr. Does Mr. Mon access this property there across that bridge?
I do, I do not know.
To the east, right in there.
There's a fence along here, so I believe all of his access comes from the south where he lives and from this area. I don't think there's any access this way across the bridge.
Where is his home at, I guess we are, right? Is that Mr. Mon's home?
Yes.
Okay.
He's a great gentleman, can't speak highly enough about him.
He looks like a Mon, I can tell you that.
Great, we enjoyed our conversations, he had some great maps that we copied that now are part of county records, so. Still here if you have any more questions.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, counsel.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to waive the rules and approve ordinance 2022 dash 14 based on things that we've heard from Matt tonight. It seems to me like we and that where that turn is, it wouldn't do the county any good to have a road there and that we should vacate that right of way.
I'll second that.
Just a clarification on that. So Matt, again, where are you? If if we approve this, Mr. Mon keeps his property line where it is, right? And but north of that, then these people here are okay to continue with their house?
Who makes questions for Chris?
That's right.
Chris, that's okay, all right.
And any dispute between them is between those parties and not with the county, correct?
All right, very good. All right, there's been a motion made and seconded that we approve ordinance, waive the rules and approve ordinance 2022 dash 14 to vacate any public right of way along 10940 South, lying north and within the boundary lines of the 165 subdivision in Avon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose. Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving on to 11B. Resolution 2022 dash 12, a resolution updating the rules for public electronic meetings by the Cache County Council. Who is going to give us some information on this?
Oh, this is the one that's always here.
It was.
But those poor folks who started their house and everything else.
I agree, but.
They're hung up.
All I know is the guy that has the heart manager and developed it has the best beard I've seen in quite some time.
Okay.
Sure did, I was just looking, I couldn't concentrate on one of those.
Yes.
If you give me one minute to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't find.
Yeah. I couldn't either, that's, yeah. Uh-oh.
Did you have it in yours?
Yeah, I had it in mine.
Yeah, we've got it.
That's weird. It's a word document.
At 11A and 11C?
Oh, there I am.
Oh wait, is there a word? Ah, there we go.
Thank you. I was going to say, I thought I looked at this at home, but then it went away.
One of our civil attorneys, Taylor, prepared this and presented it at an ordinance review committee.
Yeah.
I was there, but I don't remember the change that was made. He's.
Let me think, John.
There were others of you there at the meeting. Anyone remember the, there were two changes that were proposed. One of them was removed, the one that would have allowed proxy voting in an electronic meeting, that one was removed, but but one change that I think may have been prompted by recent state legislation that we needed a resolution to to continue the option of electronic meetings in emergency circumstances.
Where's the champion of red line? This is Mr. Champion of Red Line, you you ought to have this memorized. No, not you, Matt, your neighbor.
Chris?
Chris. I don't know if you remembered everything else. I think I think there was a period missing something or a question, I don't know what it was.
Electronic meetings.
Yeah.
My question is, where did this come from in the first place?
Ordinance and policy review.
Put through the committee?
Yeah, apparently we need to have something in our, doesn't.
So at the outset of COVID, the council adopted a resolution almost identical to this to allow for electronic meetings during COVID. During the last legislative session, the legislature passed something that required an addition or update to that resolution so that electronic meetings would be able to be continued as needed.
Oh.
And so this is the.
On this, just bring it in.
Was this the?
But I can't remember what that change was.
Can we just postpone this to the next meeting?
I think that is probably a good idea.
Postpone this to the next meeting, get it on, we'll get it in our packet.
And the red line and then we'll know.
We'll get the red line version with everything corrected and.
Apologize for not being ready on that.
Okay.
I had a couple observations that we might want to consider as I looked at this. One of them being that it always requires an anchor location, physical location, but what if there's a real emergency where we don't have lights or power or heaven forbid, this courthouse should tumble to the ground? Would it, would we want to put that except in an emergency, there's an anchor locate physical location here at our usual meeting place? Just in case, I mean, we're trying to look, I'm trying to look at this from a, oh my heavens, worst case scenario, and I don't mean to be so dark, but I'm trying to think, what would we need at that point and would we be like, oh my gosh, we can't do anything because our rules say this?
This may be, well, not maybe, this is, that's something we'll look at if we postpone consideration.
Okay.
I think that the state code may require an anchor location. If it doesn't, but yeah, let's let's look at that.
Yeah, an anchor location at not necessarily where we always meet.
Correct, yeah.
In case of emergency and we can't get in here.
Maybe it's at the chair's home where they initiate the the meeting from their computer or something.
Maybe it wouldn't be safe to meet here. The other question I have, and this is something that Robert's rules, as I helped write an electronic meetings thing for the State Central Committee of my party, one of the things that contemplated was the responsibility of the member who's connecting electronically and whether that connection, if they lost the connection, would that invalidate a vote? And the language that they had was, no action shall be invalidated on the grounds that the loss of or poor quality of a member's individual connection prevented participation in the meeting. And I thought that might be something we would want to consider because as you're starting to go to vote and maybe you're in the canyon and you lose connection, does that invalidate the vote? Can you call the vote back and say, well, that wasn't fully legal because we we lost that person? It's not clear. But could you look at that, John?
Yeah, we can look at that too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks on a sticky note. And one other thing, you guys are going to think I'm really dark now, but in a horrible emergency and we have to have a quorum of members to meet, the possibility exists that we could lose our county executive, we could lose members of our council, would it be a wise idea to put a quorum of surviving members? I mean, that sounds awful, but if we're trying to think emergency ahead, perhaps that's something we should consider.
How can you ascertain if you have surviving members if we're in an emergency and one of us can't connect?
I don't know.
I'm just bringing that point up.
Yeah, you should, I'm just thinking out loud.
We declared Nolan dead, but then he rises.
Some of these, some of these are issues that may take longer than one meeting to resolve. We'll, we'll make sure that we get it updated to meet current code, current state code and then we can continue.
No resurrection available.
All right. So do I need a motion to postpone this? Okay, we're postponing Resolution 2022 dash 12 to a later time. All right, C, Resolution Resolution 2022 dash 13 and a resolution amending the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, Section 9, Employee Benefits. And Ms. Amy?
Yes, hello, counsel. Just to give you a little bit of background, the recommendation is to add Juneteenth as a paid holiday. It is known as National Freedom Day and it's a holiday that commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. Many states across the nation have already decided to recognize this holiday and on March 24th, 2022, Governor Cox signed this as a state holiday, making us the 44th state that recognizes Juneteenth as a paid holiday. As a result of this, what we would like to do and what's been recommended is that Juneteenth be considered to be a paid holiday and follow the way that the state is choosing to observe this holiday as a few of our offices won't be able to function if the state offices are closed. That includes our DMV and also our attorney's office. And so with this, the way that it's written in state code is it states that if Juneteenth or June 19th falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, the holiday is recognized on the preceding Monday. If the holiday falls on a Saturday or Sunday, the holiday is recognized on the following Monday. So instead of adding all of that language and being so confused, the resolution states in number one there, Juneteenth will be observed on the day that has been adopted by the state of Utah and then we just need to see what the state of Utah does and we follow that because that is some confusing language, I do have to say.
Did not the banking institutions and the federal accept this as well? So you really wouldn't get anything by having it and then working anyhow?
That is correct.
No trends, anything financial or anything?
Right. Also, as I reached out to my HR colleagues throughout the state in different counties, I was able to get 16 of them to respond and all 16 of them have had passed through their councils or their commissions to recognize this as a paid holiday as well. I'm happy to read that list to you if that's helpful, but just know that 16 out of the 29 that, and those are 16 that responded to me, there could be more have have chosen to recognize this. So you have the resolution with the red line in front of you. The other thing that this does that I want to bring to your attention is down on number three, it talks about our special leave. If you remember, our special leave is pay that we give to those that have to work on those holidays, including our sheriff's office, our public works department and so and our firefighters as well. And so that changes how much special pay they would be accruing each pay period just by a little smidge. So instead of four hours, it would be 4.3 hours for those that are working an 80-hour work week and for those that are working 106 hours per pay period. I said an 80-hour work week, I'm sorry, 80-hour work period.
Some of them feel like that.
Otherwise, we have a whole different issue, yes. And then those that are working 106 hours in that work period or that pay period would be moved from 5.30 hours that they would be accruing to 5.70 hours per pay period. So any questions that I can answer?
Well, we'll sign out.
Thank you, Amy.
I guess my question is, is we do have, we do have Martin Luther King holiday, which is very, very similar to the Juneth holiday, isn't it? They're both based civil rights and now we're going to honor it twice.
I don't know how you want me to answer that.
I don't know how you'd answer.
I know, I wouldn't answer.
Okay.
And I might get in trouble for asking the question, but it sure seems to me like we're already celebrating that holiday. So I guess before long, we're going to think of another holiday to.
You give me a day off pay now, disrespect Fred Flintstone.
Is there anything? I'll do this, I'll do this.
I don't want you in the paper.
Let me do this. I'm going to make a motion, Chairwoman, that we waive the rules and approve Resolution 22, 2022 dash 13. Second.
Okay, it's been approved and, I mean, motion.
You did.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2022 dash 13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Resolution D, I mean, D, Resolution 2022 dash 14, a resolution amending 2022 Cache County budget.
We've been over this and over this and over this and I would like to rate, waive the rules and approve Resolution 2022 dash 14, a resolution amending the 2022 Cache County budget as presented to us.
Any second on the motion?
I'd like to wait, I didn't get to read through it. But I will make a motion to amend, that's an order. I make a motion to amend item number one, the internal audit services and amend taking up from the appropriated fund balance and instead taking it from the ARPA standard deduction. up from the appropriated fund balance and instead taking it from the ARPA standard deduction.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that amendment.
So, it's been, we've had a motion and it's seconded that we, restate that again, please.
That we amend where that funding in number one is coming from, instead of the appropriated fund balance that we take that money from the standard deduction for ARPA.
Okay, what she said.
Standard allowance.
Standard allowance, I'm thinking of taxes, aren't I?
Okay, all right. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, then that will come back to us next week, get a chance to review it with that amendment.
I'd also like to make the following amendments, believing that because we are talking about the ARPA funding that they are indeed appropriate. So, I will move that we add to this budget amendment for the Victim Services Unit, $450,000 for childcare, $100,000 for food assistance, $100,000 for gas assistance, $25,000 for emergency clothing, hotel and necessities, that looks like $100,000 for utilities, phone assistance, $150,000 for tutoring, and then on the third page, $25,000 for the first responder care support thing and $25,000 for the Community Violence Intervention Summit that's coming up next spring.
All right, we have a motion.
All out of the ARPA funds.
All out of the ARPA funds.
I'll second that.
Elective or?
Standard.
The eligible, right?
Or this, eligible.
That one is eligible.
That's eligible, so that comes out of the $15 million budget.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we amend for the next budget hearing, correct?
Amended on this.
Amended, yeah, on, and we include $450,000 for childcare, $100,000 for food assistance, $25,000 for emergency clothing, hotel and necessities, $100,000 for utilities and phone, and then on page three.
And $150,000 for tutoring and $100,000 for gas.
Okay.
It's a long list.
Okay, $150,000 for tutoring and the gas, where's the gas one? Oh, gas assistance, $100,000 for gas assistance, and then $25,000 for.
First responders.
First responder, no, $100,000 for the first responders.
It's just 25 for the first responders.
I just did the 25.
Oh, 25, okay, thank you. And then 25 for the Community Violence Intervention Summit.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else that we need to add to that? Okay, very good, moving on. Other business, Greater Cache Valley Economic and Business Summit, it's going to be held two days, Wednesday, May 4th and Thursday, May 5th. On Wednesday, it's going to be held, do we know where, Janine, I'm sorry? Riverwoods, thank you, Sean. It will be held at Riverwoods from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and then on the 5th, they're going to do local business tours, starting at 10, right, Sean?
Eight o'clock now.
Eight o'clock. And where do they meet for that?
Here in County Park.
Okay, thank you.
Which tours they taking?
Well, we have a couple of that are still a little, we're thinking about.
Thank you for the question, Councilman Erickson. So, there's an agricultural sciences group and a technology sciences group. Technology will be Space Dynamics Lab, Aspire Center, and now I feel really bad that I've, thank you very much, Councilman Borup knows about my conference. Geez, Gosner and Thermo Fisher and possibly JBS, which we are waiting for confirmation on the start time for that one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have to register for that, Sean, or can we just show up anytime?
It would be preferable just so that we know, particularly on the tours, just so that we can be assured that we have the seat count, we are limited by the amount of seats on a bus. That doesn't mean that somebody couldn't follow in their personal vehicle should they decide to meet us at one or, you know, one or more stops, but can't be there for the whole day and need to be flexible. Ditto for lunch on the conference day on the 4th, but that's more of a courtesy than anything that I would extend to the council.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Smithfield Health Days Parade, Saturday, May 14th at 10 AM. Any additions to those names there? Mr. Erickson, are you going or still question mark on the Smithfield Health Days?
It's still a question mark.
Okay, thank you. Richmond Black and White Days Parade, May 21st, looks like we have still question marks for there for Carl and.
I should be able to go, I think.
Okay, so, okay for Carl. Dave, on the Richmond Black and White Days, is that still a question mark for you?
I will probably, I will be involved in that one, I think.
You will, okay, thank you. Right, council member reports, Carl, we'll start with you.
Nothing.
Okay, Gina?
I'm working with the sheriff and I've talked to Matt, there's an issue in Hyde Park about people going up and down the road by the vineyards, going onto private property and they've been having some issues there. And so, I would like to talk about it at the next council meeting because I think it has some germane issues for all of us and would also like to talk about this idea that's being thrown around about restarting the road committee, but it's more of a, not necessarily the mountain roads, but to look at roads throughout the county in general. Am I describing that correctly, Matt? So, I'd like to, I just wanted to give you a heads up about that and would like to put that on the next agenda.
Paul?
Nothing for me.
Nolan?
I don't think I have anything.
Forty? David?
I want to pass ordinance 2022-CMAP.
What is that?
That one tells me that I need to go on vacation.
Okay.
I need to get a second, that's so. That's just.
I'll second, I'll second.
No.
I thought you were on vacation most of the time.
We did meet yesterday, I met with the, on the solid waste.
Yes.
We met with the, well, there was a group that met together, put together actually by request of representatives, especially Casey Snyder, he was the one that invited me to it, and we met with the Holly Danes, Mayor Danes and ESA, and then they had a Boston gentleman economist from Utah State and a solid waste expert from Utah State. Anyway, they, we met together and kind of hashed around a bunch of things. They are meeting again here within the next couple of weeks and just so that we can keep the dialogue going.
Awesome.
But I know the mayors, they are meeting also and their dialogue is very strong and they're very active in putting things together, they've been meeting themselves, but this meeting was actually put together mainly to address some of the legislative concern, you know, that was put up, that was actually gave us some, it actually put us to the bargaining table versus sit and listen. And so, it's been a good thing and I was actually very impressed with how open Mayor Danes and it was and just happy, let's get something worked out. And so, I think we're on a good foot to things. There may be a, you know, she, they may go ahead and do an official document saying that they're getting out of the contract and giving us one year, but we're also working with them on other things to, you know, it's just all talk right now, but we are working together at least.
Great, thank you.
Couple of things aren't pleasant once in a while, but they need to be said, but in that smaller group, I'm glad they're said.
Okay, great, thank you. The only thing I have to report, I'm working a little bit, just starting, working with some constituents that I have on Sixth West of the right widening of that road and some of the property that's going to be lost on some of that on there, so I'm trying to arrange some meetings to find out exactly what's going on with that. Other than that, we are adjourned.